You know, you know what he posted, maybe he just said it. He's posted here. Maybe he just told you that. So, I'm okay. Thank you. You don't need to say anything for it?
Yeah. And, uh, yeah, okay. Let's see here. I don't know where it goes next. It's all bigger than I had. It's just, you know. What's your next question? I love to do it in the last two years. I mean, it's, you know. The kids are all grown up.
Well, writing is a chance of surprise.
Everybody ready? Gosh, I don't need about three extra things here. Welcome to tonight's, um, study, or pre-meeting. And we will start out with council reports. Councilor Ozati? Councilor Namela?
I'll just say, uh, one, we had a great opportunity last night to go to the Ralston House, um, event last, and, uh, I hope they, I didn't hear how much they raised, but, um, it was a really lovely evening and so many people that are dedicated to helping our children in this area. So, um, it's a great event. Hopefully more people can attend next year. Um, I'm also attending this week, a Dr. Cog meeting where they will be going over, and that's Denver Regional Council of Governments. Um, and one of the things that they'll be reviewing with, uh, the board is the Prop 123. So, I'll come back and report on anything more that I learn.
Cool. Mayor Protem?
Last week I did, uh, had the inclusivity board. And so, the inclusivity board was taught, were speaking about their goals for this next year after, uh, attending the, the meeting that staff put on, the clerk's office put on. Um, and they, so they were reviewing our strategic plan and looking at the new format. Um, just some feedback I'd give is they really like the format and they think that's really going to help them narrow down the goals that they go after. So, they did, um, select a group of the inclusivity boards to do a task force so that they could work on narrowing down their goals and making sure they line up with our strategic plan. And so, I think that their plan was to take that group, um, circulate that back through the staff member, um, in order to get it in front of all of the inclusivity board. Um, and then one of the questions that we made sure to cover was that those will be kind of like their draft ones since, um, they were due back to us before they'll meet again. So, they'll provide them back to us, but then they'll still have to go back to their board and codify, um, what they are, plus, you know, get any feedback from us. So, um, it was a good conversation, though. They were really excited about the format and, um, their chair really felt that was going to help them get a little bit more focused and understand kind of what, you know, how they can work with us better. Um, the other two things that are coming up this week is I'm going to meet with the, uh, Chair of the Legacy Foundation tomorrow for coffee, um, just as, you know, continuing onboarding with that group. And then they have a board meeting this, uh, Wednesday at four o'clock. So, next week I'll report back to you how that goes.
Councilor Emmons? Councilor Seymour?
Yes, this last week, uh, I had an opportunity to meet with, um, some of the members of the Park Rec Library Open Space, um, they had a little, uh, gathering before the onboarding meeting. And, uh, the topic of discussion at that point, too, was, uh, moving ahead, um, and their concerns that, uh, we also have as far as how they can assist with the Emerald Dashboard situation. So, uh, they're well aware of that and they've, they've been kept up to date on that by our, our, uh, Parks and Forestry people. So, moving ahead on that, on that process. Um, did attend the reception, the pre-meeting for the Boards and Commissions, and I thought, um, the Clerk's Office did an outstanding job on that. And it was great to see, uh, so many volunteers fill this room that participate on our Boards and, and Commission. So, it was a good eve, uh, good evening to get to see them. And then, uh, yes, the Ralston House event, uh, was memorable last night. And this week, uh, I've got Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation, um, meeting that was, uh, the date was moved off a week. And that is on, uh, Wednesday. And that's it for this upcoming week.
Councilor Baker?
Um, for me, Ralston House was fantastic. Um, and if you ever need a place to go out and eat, um, I know it's not Westminster, but 240 Union, um, they, they give everything it takes to do that whole thing, uh, food-wise and with their vendors. So, uh, they give a whole bunch and believe in Ralston House. And we heard a story last night of just one of the thousands that they, uh, take care of each week year. And, um, very hard to listen to, but thank goodness we have Ralston House in Casa to help these kids. Uh, I had Jeff Coe Mayor's, uh, lunch on Friday. It was my turn to host and we all went to Los Sarcos. Uh, we had, I had a ribbon cutting at North Suburban. They are taking over the 112th and Sheridan, uh, used to be our emergency spot there from, um, UC Health. And, um, on the one side, they are doing, um, groups for, um, our, uh, our teenagers with mental and mental health issues and things and coping. And, um, through their program, they have to be referred in, but they have day programs there for those kiddos. And then on the other side, they are going to keep it and open it back up as an emergency. But, and I'm just sharing, um, they shared because of permitting issues. Um, it can't open until July first, so I don't know what those are. I don't know if we can help, but, um, glad to see that, that opening back up. And for, I know for the part they're helping with the mental health for our youngsters, um, it, they took me through their rooms and what they're going to be doing and how, what the program is. And, um, I think it's much needed in our community and, um, kids will benefit from it. So, glad to see that being repurposed. Um, also went to the Boards and Commissions meeting, um, just, well, the, the room was full and, uh, we got to see everybody that is on each of those Boards and Commissions. And then they, um, dropped off and went into their goal planning with our strategic plan. And so, I had several comments from those that attended that they loved the direction, they liked that we were, they were connecting with the strategic plan and thanked us for doing that. So. City Manager, I did not see you on my list. Do you have anything or are you waiting for the meeting?
Waiting for the meeting.
Okay. Then, does anybody have questions about tonight's meeting that they need asked? Councilor Ozati? Councilor Namela? Got them all answered?
I had mine answered. I appreciate staff turning those around. I know it was short notice, uh, some of that came up today, so I appreciate you getting that back to us.
Okay. Um, I did forget to ask one. Um, I was wondering, when was the last economic development, uh, sorry, the economic analysis done, um, for, that served the comp plan and the land uses that are proposed?
Welcome.
Hey, is this on? Uh, thank you, Councilor Namela, for the question. Uh, we did not do a new one post-COVID. Uh, there was some work, uh, done before COVID, uh, and that analysis, obviously, we don't have a lot of confidence in it, given how the world has changed since then. Uh, but we did get some, uh, good guidance from our Economic Development Department staff, and there was a UC Lead School of Business Study, uh, that was conducted. And then information was rolled into the, uh, Existing Conditions and Planning Challenges Report in Attachment 9.
Thanks. Councilor, Mayor Protem, did you have anything else? Councilor Emmons? Councilor Seymour? Councilor Baker?
Is now the time to go into better understand the answers to Mayor Protem's question?
Doesn't matter?
Could you better explain the whole A, uh, well, the whole thing to address the city's varied housing needs? Three avenues are provided that modify provisions of the land use character types. So, what are we saying there? Help me understand.
There's the big book.
Uh, I'm sorry, Councilor Baker, I heard you speaking, but I could not hear exactly what you were saying back up.
Well, if you knew that I didn't have my microphone on, that would probably be helpful. Uh, no, uh, uh, on page 28 of the comprehen, proposed comprehensive plan, it says to, I mean, address the city's varied housing needs. Three avenues are provided that modify provisions of the land use character types. So, this is a change from what it was before.
Uh, part, parts of it are a change. Uh, the accessory dwelling units, uh, would be a policy change. That's not something other prior comprehensive plans, uh, in Westminster allowed. Um, and, uh, actually, I just had this conversation with someone upstairs. So, introducing them in the comprehensive plan, uh, creates a policy foundation, but we would still need to, uh, update our development codes, uh, if, if council chooses to incorporate that policy and then work with individual neighborhoods to amend their PUDs should residents desire, uh, to have those. Um, the second one is the, uh, congregated care and the way, uh, those facilities count density. Uh, basically, it's a two and a half ratio. That is not new. That's something that's been in our comprehensive plans, uh, historically. And then the, uh, caretaker residence for employment land uses. Uh, this is something we've, uh, a couple of things have happened. We've, we've had a desire from startup businesses that they'd like a place where they could, you know, sleep upstairs and, uh, tend to their quarters. Uh, we don't really have a way to allow that. There is, uh, one zoning category that exists in Westminster municipal code that does permit that, but it's not our PUD, which is, most of our cities is PUD. Um, we also are aware of actually some older situations, uh, where people are doing that. Um, I'm thinking of, uh, there's a little commercial building on Lowell, uh, that has, uh, I can't think of any, there's a bar there. It's an interesting mid-century building, but there's people that live upstairs. The owner, uh, Mike Lockwood, actually lives up there. And so, this would really formalize that and to be something that the city would agree to.
Okay. Cause I don't remember talking about these specifically in our discussions prior to this. Have you just missed that or?
Yeah, I don't know that that was something we talked about in the study sessions, uh, over the last year, but it was something that came up in prior discussions with council. I, I remember Councilor Seymour at one point, um, inquired about this. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly what meeting that was at.
Okay, uh, so if we don't want to do this, we just, uh, strike it from this document?
That, that would be something within the authority of council, yes. You could, you could propose that as an amendment.
Thank you.
I'm making a note, Councilor Baker, so you possibly want to strike ADUs?
Just the ADUs or all three? Okay.
Any other questions, Councilor Baker? Okay.
Would now, when, when would we discuss, um, for example, some of the planning commission add-ons and suggestions? When would we discuss our, um, agreement or non-agreement with those?
After, um, public hearing and when it is in our hands to discuss what's before us. I have a list and, um, got coached as to how to work our way through those because we will need a vote, um, on those, um, whether they're support or negative to, um, to guide, um, the planning group. So, I have a list. I, and that's the reason I was going to add this to it if he's asking for that to be looked at.
And, and Mayor McNally, if I may, I think we may have found a way to make that a little simpler.
Okay.
Um, the staff's recommendation and the plan before you tonight incorporated already the eight amendments we agreed to with the commission. So, it, assuming that the council agrees, uh, with staff's agreement on those eight items, it really just leaves three, um, of the remaining items.
That's what I have.
Should you choose to take them out?
Yep. I just didn't know about those eight, because we haven't had discussions. So, that, that is exactly what I have and I'll add this one, so we don't lose it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Perhaps you can help me find, because I know I didn't necessarily agree with everything.
It should be attachment 14?
I've got a copy right here if you want to take a quick look or can we get a copy made? Oh, okay, because I just have the whole.
Yeah. It's on page 683.
Ah, thank you. Yes, folks, that's, yeah. Item was over 700 pages.
Yes.
So, it, it has a cover sheet with, which each of the planning commission amendments listed visually, but then behind it is the actual markup to the pages, uh, that were impacted by those amendments. Yeah, they're in the, uh, appendix to the slides.
Must be a little bit different. Sorry, you said attachment 14?
Uh-huh.
This is not, I just have comments. These are all at the end.
We've got enough time if we need to run upstairs and make a copy of mine.
Okay, that might help. And then I did have another policy I'd like to see in economic resilience, but... I just don't know, I don't remember where it was now. Yeah. I'll just wait for the copy on that one. But, um, I didn't see anything in the comp plan in the economic resilience chapter about, um, setting aside reserves for O and M and replacement of facilities. Um, I'd just like to have that on as a direction for staff to be thinking about when we do potentially max out debt, um, another 10 years or so that we'll also still need.
Welcome to the webinar. You have entered as an organizer and may now speak to any other organizers or panelists on the line. When you are ready to begin the presentation, press the Start Broadcast button on the GoTo Web.
Anyway, that.
So, if, if I may, if I'm tracking along, um, with, with at least the 90% of what I did hear you say. Um, so, since our December 5th study session, we did add Goal ER9, which I'm assuming you've, you've looked at on page 70. Uh, and this was based on part of the conversation about, we need to be thinking about replacing or upgrading our facilities. So, um, ER9 and Policies 9.1 through 9.3 were added. But if I'm hearing you correctly, you think there needs to be some additional language regarding the financing aspect?
Well, it said we would finance everything by debt, just the plan for the debt. And I was kind of hoping that we would also take advantage of opportunities to set some dollars aside. I know we have a capital reserves, but I know it's not, um, structured to accommodate things like a new courthouse or any large replacement or upgrade to City Hall someday. So.
So, we, we did develop this language working with our policy and budget staff and this was their recommendation, but... Is Chris in the room? I don't know if he has any thoughts on this. Hi, good evening. Chris Lindsay, Assistant City Manager. I think we're certainly open to any changes to their recommended language. Yeah.
We have, we have men, a few, you know, we're going to have a proclamation and some other stuff happening, so you've probably got, and then I don't know how long public hearing will take, but you have from now till the end of public hearing to come up with something good.
Okay. If, if I may, we will be doing the Parks Recreation Libraries Plan after the comprehensive plan. In fact, I've been invited to manage that project. So, um, I think, um, while there's certainly other municipal facilities, that would at least give us one way, I think we were already thinking about costs as part of that scoping of that plan. So, I think there's opportunities to continue that discussion.
Okay, but, you know, if, if no one else wants to add something like that, then, you know, I'm fine with dropping it for now, but I just thought we could have something stronger.
Mayor Protem, did you, you were thinking about?
I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just wondering if like a blanket, like, I would like to see what's in there. What, where is, because it sounds like there's something already in there. Where is it? I have to find and look and see what it is, because I don't, I don't object to the idea of it. But I also wonder like how specific you want to get in this document, considering like each of the different areas where we might have to fund capital, um, projects, might have different mechanisms. Like, so I think parks in open space, they have a tax that other, and to, or other departments aren't going to be able to pull from. Same with like the utility has certain, uh, fund or, um, public safety, we have a certain fund that we can and can't use for certain things. So, um, my, just off the top of my head, I'm just wondering if it really can be, if you, if you don't, if you get too specific in the, a document like this, does that kind of, you know, hamstring us? So, I just want to make sure that if we come up with something, that it's, you know, that's more specific to meet your need, that it's not too specific to not accommodate for the fact that it's going to be different depending on what the building's for, if that makes sense.
Mayor, if I could, please?
Yes, sorry.
I, I think the, you know, the question is, is, um, you know, December 5th, we, you know, the council said the comp plan was good. We've taken that out to the public. We've refined that based upon feedback from the planning commission. And in this case, if there's a counselor who wants to make an amendment, then there's a motion to amend the comprehensive plan as currently written, and this is the language that we're going to propose, look for the second, vote, discuss, and away we go. Um, and so, uh, you know, I mean, the staff spent time on this, uh, you know, to craft this language. Um, I wish we had a better explanation for why we came up with this language. Um, but the reality is, is that what's before the council and what the public has seen is, is written as it is. And the way to change that then would be an amendment, um, and a motion, second, et cetera. Okay?
Councilor Namela?
I just want to state that with the December 5th meeting, I did not assume that we were just going to have the comp plan returned to us in a final form. I thought that there was going to be outreach completed with the key stakeholder property owners that needed to be contacted, and then that we would be able to review the comp plan one more time without being in this final session, because there are a lot of, uh, still outstanding items that I think need to be refined. But that's just where I'm at.
Councilor Ozati?
Uh, just throwing my support behind this amendment, I would second it if there was a motion.
We are in, um, pre-session, so we, we don't make, um, motions yet. Mayor Protem?
Um, I just, now that I've had, got to look at this, like, to, to me, and I understand, like, your desire, but I, like, this is vague enough that it says we have a want to make sure that we're properly looking forward. Like, if I look at 93, it talks about us wanting to look at costs in a way that we're, we're, we're forward-thinking. So, um, I'd have to understand exactly like how you would incorporate what you're saying. Like, I don't, in, in, in practicality of what you're saying, I agree with, but I'm just, I would want to know what you think is missing from the statement, I guess.
Well, the way I read it is, it doesn't call out the need to, um, establish reserves for future replacement. It's just monitor and evaluate existing facilities, um, continue to utilize debt paid for with ongoing revenue streams, um, to fund asset replacement to ensure that future, so it doesn't really talk about, um, you know, setting aside funds now versus just using debt later.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
I think I have a slightly different reading. So, you say replacing assets. I'm thinking about specifically municipal facilities, and typically those are large enough that a cash replacement reserve isn't going to be able to fund that. So, that's why we wrote this, to address utilized debt paid with ongoing revenue streams. I don't think we're saying we wouldn't use capital reserves for asset replacement, um, but just, as, as I think of this, municipal facilities are of a, are of a magnitude that a cash replacement reserve doesn't meet the need.
Not seeing any other questions, we will have a five-minute break before the meeting starts.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of March 13th, 2023. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome you to the Westminster City Council meeting for March 13th. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to rules of decorum and that are posted at the back of the room. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind you that there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. Signs and place cards are prohibited in council chambers and all attendees should remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles, nor shall the doorways be blocked. Please take your conversations out into the hallway because we do hear you from all areas of this room while we're trying to deal with our business. And I will let you know, we are hearing you and you need to go out into that hallway if we do hear you. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation, and I will remind council when we have our especially public hearing, I, I will do it now because I never look at it, but my, my phone's going up here so that people know I am listening to you and not distracted. Roll call, please. Counselor Baker?
Here.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Present.
Counselor Emmons?
Present.
Counselor Azadi?
Here.
Mayor McNally?
Here.
Counselor Narmela?
Here.
And Counselor Seymour?
Here.
And do I have a motion for the minutes of February 27th? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mary. Moved to approve the minutes of February 27th, 2023 meetings as presented.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes of February 27th, 2023 as presented. Is there anyone that has any changes or comments? All of you that would like to vote affirmatively, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to presentations, and Counselor Baker, you have a proclamation.
I would like to be joined by the person here to receive the proclamation about colorectal cancer. Thanks. I'll get the microphone. Thank you. Come on, run this side.
Why don't we begin by, of you introducing yourself?
Hi, good evening. My name's Ian Khan. I live right around the corner on Princeton Street, and I made a request to the council to recognize March as colorectal cancer awareness month. And I don't know if you're going to read it, or if I, if you want me to just say a couple things?
Yeah, say a couple of things.
Okay, great.
Some are in here.
Some are in here, but I've got some, some extra ones. So in 2019, there were 1,971 new cases of colorectal cancer in Colorado, and that led to 671 deaths. It's the third leading cause of death in men and women combined in Colorado. It impacts both men and women, and it's really recommended to start screening at age 45, but I would recommend talking to your doctor before then, as if you have a family history, you need to start screening before then. And also, it's really important to start on time screening. Incidence of colorectal cancer, so new cases are increasing for those 50 and under, while it's been declining for those that are 50 and over. And so with that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you. And this is a brave man because he's coming up here with a ugly of the situation that's best addressed by awareness and information. So I'll begin with the proclamation. Whereas it is estimated that over 145,000 people were really diagnosed with the colorectal cancer, and over 53,000 people died of really colorectal cancer in 2020. And one in 10 colorectal cancers are diagnosed in individuals under the age of 50. Patients under 50 years of age are 58% more likely than older patients to be diagnosed with a late stage cancer, stages three or four. Well, the incidence of, is expected to increase by 140% in 2030. And whereas one in three people are not up to date with, with really colorectal cancer screenings, but affordable take home options exist, and 60% of the deaths could be of the prevented with really screenings, and whereas colorectal cancer incident and more and, and mortality rates are really disproportionately higher among racial and ethnic really minorities. Black Americans are about 20% more, more likely to be diagnosed with really colorectal cancer, and 40% are more likely to die. Less than 50% of Asian Americans are up to date with their colorectal cancer screenings. Indigenous really communities have higher rates of colorectal cancer than do their white counterparts, and, and really Ashkenazi Jews, that is Eastern European descent Jewish population, have one of the highest risks of colorectal cancer of any ethnic group in the world. It is really critical for all people of all ages know well the signs of, the signs and symptoms of, okay, the disease. And whereas observing colorectal cancer awareness month during the month of March would, would, would really provide a special opportunity to offer education on the importance of really early detection and of screening. And now I, and now therefore I, Nancy McNally, mayor of the city of Westminster, on really behalf of the entire city council and staff, due of the hereby proclaim, the month of March 2023 as really colo, really cancer awareness month, signed this 13th day of March 2023, Nancy McNally.
City manager, do you want to present the next presentation?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors. We have a presentation which is an update on the Knox Court, House and cleanup, and now vacant lot. And so bring forward Mr. Eric Otzelberger, who's been working this project for the past year, please.
Welcome.
Thank you, manager. Freytag, Mayor McNally, Mayor Protem, council. Just want to start with a few thank yous first to the residents and neighbors, many of which are here this evening. This whole situation has been horrible, frustrating. There's nothing we can do to change that. I wanted to thank this city council. It was a very bold action last year, and in very short order to appropriate $400,000 to expedite the work here and approve a sole source contract. Speaking of, I want to thank D and K, our contractor. 52 days to complete an asbestos abatement like this is moving. All you have to do is look at Pizza Hut or property on Yates Court in Highland Greens that was three years plus, or the Deekman property that the city's working on right now near Tri-City Baptist to just give a sense of the challenges that, that come with the regulatory framework for asbestos. Want to thank Cowgirl Demolition. They were subcontractor that helped with the foundation, capping the utilities. Trevor Strohsneider and the folks at CDPHE, they were great partners on this. Greg Graham in Mr. Frankel's office has been a great guide, and Ken McFarland from Ken McFarland Properties that negotiated in good faith with the city in the release of the junior lien. So I'll be very brief. The city has a $329,464.39 lien on 7731 Knox Court. The reverse mortgage holder HUD have both released their deeds of trust that occurred in September of last year. Attachments, recorded documents with those releases are included in the packet this evening. Ken McFarland Properties, there are two recorded documents in your packet, the full satisfaction of judgment and release of the certificate of levy. So those were the legal mechanisms. They, they were in first position. It was a junior mechanics lien, but that was in place in 2015. That's been resolved. So where we're at tonight, it is private property owned by Mrs. Doyle, and the city has a $329,000 lien on the property. We have made repeated attempts, both in person and phone, to contact Mrs. Doyle. We will keep doing that, trying to work in, in good faith towards, towards a, a future state here. Staff received clear direction under executive session privilege last evening, and we, we know our course of action going forward. That's what I have, and I'll, I'll open it up to questions, if there are any.
I would just say executive session, I think, was last week, not last night.
Oh, so, oh, I'm sorry. It, it, time is a relative thing post COVID. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor McNally.
Any questions? Thank you for all the work that you've done, and we know we'll have more conversations about this.
Don't we have some information to share about our plans moving forward?
I would ask the attorney if he could speak to sharing any information that was discussed in that executive session.
So we've been looking into next steps, and Mr. Graham is doing some research, and we expect to have an update to share with city council, but it is not yet ready. So appreciate patience, but we are looking into how to resolve the ownership situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to public comment. I am told we have two people speaking just in public comment, and then we have nine signed up for public hearing. Just know that if you're here to just make a general comment about anything, that's now. But if you're here to talk for the hearing that we have in just a little bit, that's when you'll talk for that issue. So city clerk, who do we have up? The first speaker is Corinne Anya. Welcome.
Hello. For the record, my name's Corinne Anya, and I live at 7700 Knox Court. I would like to introduce myself to Mr. Freytag. I apologize for saying your name wrong, but I'm here to express my concern that you don't think that our opinion or our input, being a resident of Knox Court, is necessary. I'm sorry, I live two houses and across the street from that house, or what was, what was that house. I do appreciate the fact that it only took you guys 185 days to agree to the cleanup, so thank you for that. However, we still live with a hole or a plot of land. I still have two neighbors who cannot move back into their home because it's not ready. It's been over a year now. Our lives have been interrupted by this, very much so. And quite frankly, our input should have been part of the conversation the entire time. As residents of that street, as members of this Westminster community who are directly affected by it, our opinion matters. We live there. This situation is affecting our property value. So our opinion matters, and I'm sorry you don't feel it does. So thank you for what you've done. The work is not over. You know, I still have to answer to my son, who, you weren't here last time, I was here, but he asked me, when is that mess going to get cleaned up? Now he's asking me, are we going to get new neighbors? What's going to happen with that spot? Do we have any say? What about our neighbors? You know, when is, you know, Mr. Emilio and when's Ms. Christie going to move back? When are we going to have this barbecue that we've all been talking about? Some camaraderie, wanting to be back out on our front porches. When do we get to do that? That's my question. Please don't forget about us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Manuel Garcia.
Manuel Garcia here, 7710 Knox Court. And Corinne touched a lot of the, the touchy stuff, you know, but our opinions should matter. And whether you believe in it or not, you know, that property, whatever you guys do, just don't give it back to them. Let someone else build there. Let someone else come in. If not, we're going to be dealing with the same crap over and over. And if people are thinking about getting a nonprofit involved to get these people some money, where was that thought for my neighbors and myself, who've all had to repair our homes? I got neighbors who are tens of thousands of dollars over budget on the build, and that's not because, you know, it's beginning to build all nice and fancy and stuff. No, that's just because of the market and insurance. These people didn't have insurance. So when it comes to that, you know, if you're thinking about trying to find these people some financial help, maybe try to find us some financial help first. My house, I couldn't do a claim just because the damages were under $2,000 of a claim, but I still paid a hefty couple thousand dollars for my repairs versus my neighbors who are tens of thousands in the hole right now. And that's with a lot of us coming together to help them build their house back. So that's all, that's all I ask is, you know, if you're going to do something with this property, auction it off to someone else, I know you got the lien rights, trying to find a way to keep it out of their hands. I'm, I mean, everybody has a right to, to live wherever they want and stuff, but I believe that this family has forfeited that right in their neighborhood, and we won't stand for it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up?
That's all we have signed up.
Do we have anybody that got here late and didn't get signed up that wanted to speak? Come forward. Come forward. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Chris Adepki. My home is located at 7741 Knox Court. It's been 55 weeks, I think, since I've been able to sleep in my own bed, cook in my own kitchen. I'm still waiting to have walls. And one of the things that scares me the most about what's happening right now is the potential that after everything that's happened, Betty Doyle remains the owner of that property and all of the rights attached to it. What about her responsibilities? All the responsibility for everything that has happened on that property has fallen to me and my neighbors. I had to pay tens of thousands of dollars to remove the hoard that had been blasted onto my property. I didn't get any help for that. That's on me. I understand as a property owner that I have responsibilities, and I think my neighbor should also be held to the same standard. Whatever else happens with that property, I do not care. As far as I'm concerned, do whatever you can to recover whatever funds have been taken from the city, and let us move on. I'm hoping within the next two months to be home, but it has been a very long time, and my recovery process will not even start until I'm able to go home. It's been nearly 13 months, and I'm living with the day-to-day struggle of how do I pay for all the things? How do I pay? How do I manage a mortgage that I still have to pay on a property I can't live in? How do I manage three utility bills? How do I manage rent? And it's a full-time job. I have two jobs right now. One of them doesn't pay very well. So I'm asking, all I'm saying is, all that I care about is that someone else is given the opportunity to do something good with that land. After everything that the city has contributed to our healing process, that's all that's left to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's John Palmer. I'm here to speak on behalf of these people down on Knox Court. They were put in a very bad situation thanks to community development, specifically code enforcement. There was 20-plus citations written on that property. I know I spoke to community development Eric Otzelberg in particular long before any of this happened. Why? There wasn't proactive measures taken years ago when this all started. And then after the house caught on fire, it was red-tagged. Again, nothing was done by the city. That's their responsibility. Now the city's put people in a very bad situation that it appears some people in this city don't care about. But again, the main problem here was community development, code enforcement, and Eric Otzelberg. He's the one that's responsible for what happened to these people and the predicament they're in. Is there no accountability on behalf of Eric Otzelberg, code enforcement, community development? There should be, and you guys should make them accountable. They should be held accountable, city manager. That's where this all started. 20-plus code violations before the first fire. No mitigation, nothing. 20-plus code violations that were never addressed. Unconscionable. And then again, the fire, after the house was red-tagged from the first fire, nothing was ever done. Nobody went in and secured the property like they should have. And again, these people called and let the city know, but yet nothing was done. Put yourself in their shoes. Put yourself in a neighborhood like that. It's unconscionable how this city's handled this. Moving forward, maybe we should be a little more proactive instead of reactive. We just recently went through the same situation down on Bar Lane with a hoarder house. How many more times does it have to happen? When are we going to learn a lesson? When is code enforcement, Eric Otzelberg, going to step up to the pump and do his job that he was hired to do? That's all I ask. These people were dealt a bad hand. You need to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? That brings us to city managers' report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilors, ladies and gentlemen, folks listening in or watching online. So a few things to update everybody on. If we could have the next slide, please. So first thing, want to make sure everybody's tracking is Sheridan Boulevard Underpass update. And a couple of things going on there. First of all, the project has paved the back-filled underpass area on the east side of Sheridan Boulevard, implemented final major traffic shift at night to construct that center medians from West 88th all the way up to the US 36th Bridge. And then just as a reminder, this project received $5.3 million in federal and state reimbursements to date. And so very successful project and looking forward, as is highlighted there at the end, looking forward to this project being delivered here in June of 2023. If anybody has any questions or wants to dive a little bit deeper, they can certainly visit our city website slash Sheridan Underpass. Next slide, please. So some Westy wins yesterday. For those that were able to participate, we had community members, city councilors, staff came together to raise money for the St. Baldry's Foundation and their fight with childhood cancer, certainly demonstrating solidarity from those who are suffering from cancer. We appreciate the Yacht Club Salon for hosting the event, and the community has raised over $205,000 since 2012 and over $18,000 in the last month to fund research to find cures for cancer. And so if you're interested in supporting this cause, and there's a great picture there to the left of somebody getting their head shaved, but would encourage folks to visit stbaldry's.org/events/westminster2023. So certainly a Westy win, and we appreciate all those that supported the event yesterday. The other thing, and this one caught me by surprise, Mountain Range High School Unified Team defeated our Westminster Police Department School Resource Officer team. Final score, 101 to 6. So they smoked us. And so 11 members of our WPD participated in the annual matchup, and it was a fun, annual, friendly competition to build camaraderie with the students. And so thanks to our school resource officers for participating in that annual event again this year. Next slide, please. And so, folks, we had a major announcement here in the city today, and I want to take some opportunity to congratulate our interim police chief, Norm Hobart. He's been selected to be Westminster's permanent police chief beginning next Monday, March 20. He currently serves, as I said, as the interim police chief. He's got a 28-year career in law enforcement. He's served the city for the past 24 years, and he's risen through the ranks of the police department, serving as the patrol deputy chief and then as the technical services deputy chief. And so just a great run or ride with the city. And so we want to say congratulations to Chief Hobart. Look forward to him becoming official next Monday morning at 9:00 a.m. Right here in council chambers, we're going to have his swearing-in ceremony, pinning ceremony. There'll be a reception afterwards, a few comments to be made, both by me and by him. And so we wanted to just recognize Chief Hobart. He's in the audience this evening. Chief, could you take a stand so we can just say congratulations? Nicely done. And I've already started my task list, chief, so it's building, okay? All right, prepare yourself. Next slide, please. And then some things to note, as I just said, next Monday morning, 9:00 a.m. here in City Hall Council Chambers for that swearing-in ceremony. And then Monday night is a city council study session, and it's not in the boardroom. It's actually going to be here at the dais. We're not going to use that boardroom until we figure out the gremlins that are working in the technology and audio visual in that room. And so it will be here in council chambers. And next slide, you can always give us a call. We want to hear from you. We want to talk with you. We want to be accessible, responsible, responsive, transparent, and accountable. You can call me at my office at 303-658-2006. You can email me directly at mfreitag@cityofwestminster.us. You can follow us on Twitter, like us on Facebook, check us out on Instagram, or ring our bell at Next Door. Pending questions, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for city manager? Thank you. That brings us to city council comments. Anyone? Counselor Nubella?
Just a few questions that came up with the public input from our community members along Knox Court. One is, we do have an emergency home repair fund, and I'm just kind of curious how that might be leveraged with this particular group of residents because it's a unique circumstance. And I would say if for some reason we exceed what we had allotted for the year, we always have for supplemental where we can come back and ask for more dollars to be appropriated to that fund. So I wanted to see about that. I'm also curious to know, since they are displaced, whether there might be some cause for assistance with utilities and maybe rent assistance through the programs that we developed really over COVID, but maybe still maintain. And another two questions. One, I mean, this isn't really for what the city can, outside of what we're able to do and, you know, potentially would do. Just curious, does, and you don't have to answer this now, but would the residents have any recourse if they were, you know, like legal recourse with the existing property owner to get any compensation for damages? Again, outside of what we do as a city, but it would be helpful for them to know. And then finally, with the mention on code enforcement, I know that often we get, there's a lot of desire to do things, you know, to take action, but we're sometimes limited with private property rights and just our own abatement abilities to get into these houses. And I think it would be helpful to take a look at if we are having repeated issues, particularly with hoarding and trash in multiple houses throughout the city. Can we look at maybe expanding our purview on how we can react? I know we're doing that potentially. We just had a city council study session on what we're going to be trying to do for vehicles and, you know, motor vehicle theft and catalytic converter theft. And so, and yeah, so I would appreciate just understanding if there's anything additional that we could do through our existing code. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Baker?
Really, thank you, Mayor. On really January 23rd of this year, I shared with our city my shock and of the dismay at the hate that had infected the Brumfield City Council. That hate caused Brumfield to make horrible choices that will hurt their residents. I concluded my, of the remarks, with a wider plea to my colleagues here on council, to our friends and colleagues in other local government, and to our representatives at the state of the legislature to reject the bad choices being proposed to address the heartbreaking losses that bleed and terrify our society from the misuse of guns. Today, my plea is more urgent. The hate that infected the Brumfield City Council has now swept into the Colorado Legislature, and it is the most ugly and vicious hate there is. It is hate masquerading as solutions. It is an attack on innocent people while of the pretending to really protect people. What began as a serious, intense, and universal desire to really stem the losses our society suffers from, well, the misuse of guns, has been transformed into a vicious attack on really completely innocent people. Current of the legislation at the State House is the attack. Fear is, well, the driver of this attack, and because emotions have swept, reason aside, the really unaddressable fear has festered into a blind rage of hate. While I understand the instant and automatic response of people being hurt is to really strike back, well, that really response does not work. Thoughtful people throughout human history have observed that an angry and angry response does not sway hearts. It is really better to really respond to the haters with love, with reason, with logic, with facts, with really proportion, and most of all, with really determination. Moreover, the Westminster City Council has, well, the responsibility, the tools, and the obligation to really respond. It would be a dark day if council shirks our really responsibility to really protect our residents. Each one of us took an oath of office to really protect our residents. Our tools are the state government lobbyists we employ to speak our voice at the legislature and our really individual voices in the public arena. Our obligation is to join, well, the discussion and contribute our perspective. There is no option to sit in silent disagreement with what is happening at the legislature. A few weeks ago, I spoke about how truth cannot exist without giving proportion to, well, the situation. And the reality of these proposals is at the legislature is they will hurt thousands of people. This, well, this can be shown by the most basic of calculations. Look at the number with the, quote, assault rifles. According to estimates, there are 24 million of this type of firearm in the United States. Well, the Colorado Legislature is contemplating banning them from really commerce. If really Westminster has an average proportional share of these guns, that would mean for our 118,000 residents, there are over 8,000 of these firearms in the city. Allowing for ownership of multiple guns at a very minimum, this means there must be far over 1,000 people in Westminster that own these guns. If banned from commerce, these guns would drop from their current value of $1,000 or more to nothing, to zero. Commerce is essential to keeping and using, or is it bearing, a product? Commerce is fundamental in ownership. Without commerce, there is no ownership. Commerce is, well, the continuous buying and selling, the constant borrowing and lending. the constant borrowing and lending, the really dropping off and picking up, well, the repair and maintenance of products. Imagine for a moment if really real estate could not engage in commerce. There would immediately be no private ownership of real property. And we don't have to imagine the devastating effects of products removed from commerce because the alcohol prohibition of the 1920s in America is the example. This, well, this, this proposed assault weapons restrictions would really strip our, our residents of a combined total of millions of dollars. And our residents have done nothing wrong. They have really committed no crime. Some have of the responsibly held these guns for years, even decades. The residents, and these residents are essential members of our community, and we must value them. We must, we must not let them be attacked or hurt. We must speak up for them. And if that was not reason enough to oppose these proposed laws, there is no confident, there is no confidence that this unprincipled attack on decent people will really benefit society at all. It is my understanding that local American governments, with the most restrictive law towards gun ownership, have some of the highest losses from gun misuse. Worse still, is the group punishment that this law is. I am appalled that anyone would condone punishing all members of a group for the act of a few individuals from that group. As the Westminster City Council, I think our duty is clear. We must protect our residents. We have the tools to lobby. We have the courage to speak. We owe our friends at the Legislature our wise advice to keep them from really committing a terrible wrong against all Colorado. We must stand against the hate that has infected the Colorado Legislature. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Yuzadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say thank you to the residents of Knox Court for coming out. Your voice was heard, and it was heard very clearly. And my heart is with you. Our hearts are with you. The city's heart is with you. I think it is time that we ensure that we can do whatever we can financially to support the neighbors. I would like to propose that the city look into methods and ways and propose something, a package of things that, like Councilor Nammella was saying, and bring that back. And hopefully, you know, we can have a couple of members of that neighborhood sit with us, give their input as to if that's sufficient enough. These guys are not greedy. They're not here because they want too much from us. They're here because they have nothing else. They have nowhere else to go. And the least we can do, it's not, it wasn't the city's fault, to be clear, as to what happened with Knox Court. But I do feel that we have the ability now to make sure that the neighbors are taken care of at least a little bit. So, I think we should do whatever we can to figure out what's possible, propose something, hear them some more. Maybe they can pick a few representatives to talk on behalf of their neighborhood and take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who came out tonight. We appreciate your participation in your local government. Couple of things I just wanted to share. So, I, if you were here earlier, if you were not, several of us went to the Ralston House 240 Union Dinner. If you don't know what Ralston House is, they're a child advocacy center. And they do forensic interviews when there's child abuse, basically. Our children see horrible things. And we heard some of that last night. So, I certainly think that that is not only an organization that is worthy of your support, but is an organization that the residents of this city benefit from. And we have had a partnership with them for many years. And great, great organization. They also do a lot of education. They will go, if you're part of a nonprofit, or a church, or an organization that want to make sure that, and you work with children, and you want to make sure that those children are safe, they will come out and help educate you and help you build processes in order to keep those children safe. So, the work that they do is unfortunate as it is that we need such work. It is needed. And, and I really would encourage anyone who has extra money that you're looking to donate somewhere to look at that organization. And the other one that we supported this, last weekend, was St. Baldry's. And so, I know that the City Manager shared that. That is a very personal event to some of us. And I always enjoy that. And I know that a lot of those folks that you saw in the pictures are actually staff members, so that was the Westminster team. But there are teams like that across the country. That's another great organization that helps fight childhood cancer. So, I always, it's one of a, one of my favorite weekends that we get to usually participate in both of those events. And I don't miss them, and both very worthy causes of your personal dollars. Lastly, next week is the third Tuesday of the month. And so, on 6:30 at Cocapelli Bear Company, I have my policy in Pilsner. That's an opportunity for you to come and speak with me about whatever you would like to come speak about. I encourage anyone who wants to come and, you know, chew my ear about whatever is going on in the city that you'd like to share your perspective on. That is a great opportunity to just have a conversation. We typically have a lot of different viewpoints. A lot of people who showed up last month, we had about 16 people that were there. I know some of my colleagues will come and support that local business and have a pint with me. So, if you so desire, I'll be there again next week from 6:30 to 8:30.
Councilor Baker?
I'm sorry?
Anyone else?
I just too want to share, Ralston House is just a fantastic place. And thanks to everybody that went to that and donated from the bottom of my heart for the St. Baldry's team. You go beyond, and it meant so much that we went over $200,000 this year. It's been 10 years. Shay started all of that. Jody Carroll, who was here in communication, and Brian Poppenglass were two of the originators. And great memories of looking at all of their hair, crazy colors. It's been many colors. And all of the team, they, they just do a great job. They care about it. And new police chief, Hobart, and they want to know if you, and I don't see Chief Menard here tonight. They're thinking we should maybe do a better job of having some competition between the fire and the police. And I suggested that to get on the firefighter's calendar, they have to have their head shaved and have that picture taken, not their beauty picture. So, anyway, we had fun yesterday, raised 18,500-plus dollars. We're hoping for 20,000. And we have until October, or December 31st to make that goal. But my grandson was part of St. Baldry's. He went through two of the trials. Those trials are now open to kids with neuroblastoma to use now on a regular basis. And he always knew. He was the, the person that was going to try it. And he never knew what would happen, but he, he just knew he was the bear to go ahead of everybody and take that torch. And he was well aware of what he was dealing with. And when we lost him in 2016, he had no regrets. So, to all these kids, we had a 10-year survivor with us last night, or yesterday morning, and a great kid. Doesn't like the microphone, so Dad spoke about the journey. But families just have no idea. And the research for kids is so little. It's amazing what St. Baldry's has been able to do because they don't even have it down pat yet, after all these years with cancer, for kids and nausea. They have to go off of adults and then sort of figure it out for each kid. So, little things like that, but when you watch a kid 24/7 over a bucket, you know every bit of research is important. So, from the bottom of my heart for everybody that was involved, from the city staff, thank you.
That brings us to consent agenda. There's nothing. And appointments and resignations, there's nothing. So, that brings us to public hearing. First reading of Councilor's Bill Number 5, adopting a revised 2040 comprehensive land use plan. And I'm going to ask Councilor Freyte, do you have a presentation?
Mayor, we do have a presentation this evening. So, Mr. Andrew Spurgeon, who leads our comprehensive plan efforts. And you've dealt with him before, and he was already here this evening talking to that. But just to kind of reset the stage, we met with the council in study session back on December 5th. Took a lot of, you know, feedback, answered a lot of questions. And the council said, you know, hey, what, what was put in front of the council at that time was, you know, generally acceptable? But we need to get some, some feedback from the community. And so, we went out during the month of, second half of December and January, and did that, and then, you know, brought that to the Plan Commission in February. And as the council asked, you know, when we would be able to bring it back, I informed the council that we would bring it back in March. And so, this is a two-step process. So, tonight's the first reading, and then the 27th, if passed tonight, would be the second reading. And so, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Spurgeon, who will lead us through the presentation. Andrew?
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor McNally, Mayor Protam Demott, City Councilors, Andrew Spurgeon, long-range planner in the Community Development Department. We are pleased to bring before you tonight a revised comprehensive plan that we hope improves the alignment between the 2040 plan and the city's vision, resulting from the discussions we had with you over the last year. After staff's presentation, there will be a legislative hearing to consider the appropriateness of the 2040 plan as a citywide policy. Legislative hearing is a little bit unlike the quasi-judicial hearings that you typically see with land use cases, where you're determining if a particular request for a project is appropriate at a given location, as opposed to legislative, which is citywide policy. Some of the speakers tonight may choose to make comments on a specific development proposal. But just to be mindful, there are no development applications associated with those projects at this time. After holding the public hearing, City Council will be asked to take action on the plan. You may recommend approval. You may offer up amendments and approve with those amendments, or you may recommend denial. Next slide, please. The general amount of attachments are entered into the public record, and this legislative public hearing has been noticed as required by Municipal Code, Section 1132. A draft of the Planning Commission minutes is included in Attachment 13, and those were subsequently approved by the Planning Commission at their February 28th meeting. Next slide, please. We have brought before you tonight a revised 2040 plan with the goal of improving the plan's alignment with the city vision. And this differs from the prior 2021 version that some of you may be familiar with. The revised approach reconsidered the few remaining vacant lands and the need for capacity for employment development, and to ensure the plan is responsive to industry trends in research and development, biotech, and similar uses. The revised approach emphasizes housing formats that support homeownership while curtailing further multifamily development of higher densities. The revised approach reduces citywide water demand. Finally, the plan was reworked to improve its readability, remove irrelevant content, and shorten the length by more than half. This was confirmed with City Council at the December 5th study session, and staff immediately jumped into communicating this through the city's different communication avenues, contacting the property owners that were impacted by these changes, sending the document out for re-referral. Timeline was communicated to council, subject to inquiry that we received, I believe, the same week of the December 5th study session. And we did presentations where we were invited, coming back to the Planning Commission in February, as, as Mark alluded to, and here tonight. So, again, we're happy to be here. I would note, this revised approach is a policy departure from some of the city's past land planning. And compared to the previous comprehensive plan, will result both in less overall development, but also development that's generally more suburban in character. Next slide, please. One of the chief concerns we understood from City Council is for water supply and the relationship between land use and water demand. So, for the benefit of the audience tonight, I think this was a request of Councilor Emmons, we wanted to share with you the interactive water supply tool that was used with the water supply workshops with City Council last summer to understand the relationship of water and land use. This tool was designed so that city councilors, as well as staff, could make individual adjustments to land use and water assumptions and see the results in real time. The basic steps are to enter a water use scenario and then a land use scenario from a dropdown menu of choices. And then, you can develop a second set of assumptions with different water use and land use scenarios, and then really start comparing those results. There's also options to adjust the risk tolerance. Staff uses 0%, but that's a policy choice. Someone could choose to go up higher in risk. We understand nearby communities fine with a 50% risk. Again, we are at zero risk as staff. There's the option of deactivating the drought management plan, see how that impacts it. And then, individual land use changes could also be entered in the tabs above the bar chart. So, those, those outputs are shown in real time, and then the user can toggle the inputs a variety of different ways to see how that works. Next slide, please. In terms of the citywide impacts, the land use changes resulting from the revised approach are applied to 27 different locations consisting of over 475 acres, as shown in Attachment 6. It's noteworthy, there is going to be additional land capacity for further employment development, and removing the potential for multifamily at 22 locations of about 461 acres. These were reviewed with City Council again at the December 5th study session, at which time, 507 acre-foot reduction of, of water was identified. I would add to that, that there were prior land use changes from the earlier draft that were carried over. Those had 106 acre-feet of water demand reduction. So, combined, it's about 613 acre-feet of water demand that's reduced there. The revised approach results in the distribution of land uses as shown in the pie chart. 40% of the city's land area will be protected as open space, parks, or golf courses. And low-density residential uses are the second greatest share with roughly 29% of the city's land area. The revised approach does curtail the greatest densities, mixed-use activity center and specific plan. By removing about 135 acres from those uses, it leaves them in place only on 2% of the city's land area. Related to this is the introduction of a density cap in the mixed-use activity center of 36 units per acre. This is a land use designation that in the past did not have a density cap. Overall, the revised plan preserves the generally suburban nature of the city with primarily lower-density development patterns, mixed with parks and green spaces. Next slide, please. Implementation of the 2040 plan will require both internal and external partnerships. The implementation plan in Attachment 10 identifies over 100 items. And this is proposed to be maintained as a separate document from the plan that will allow it to function more as a work plan for staff. We can work with council as priorities change through the budgeting process and community survey results, and make those adjustments. The range of topics include further development of housing policy, code updates, programming to support businesses, parks, a whole sundry list of things there. The plan will be monitored. It's a living document that will be amended to address changing priorities. A biennial report is proposed to measure 32 quantitative indicators that are established in Chapter 9 of the plan. Next slide, please. Westminster Municipal Code does establish criteria for adopting the comprehensive plan. The first floor, first four criteria relate to suitability of plan contents, and three additional criteria relate to the planning process. Staff's overall analysis finds the plan conforming to the criteria. The plan has been correlated with other municipal planning efforts, notably the water supply plan, transportation plan, sustainability plan. A coordinated community engagement program was critical to developing the plan as described in Attachment 5. There were a variety of in-person and online activities and communications to thousands of Westminster residents. The plan is cognizant of the city's vision statement as revised in 2020, and then further revised in 2022, and expands upon the concepts of the strategic plan through five topical chapters. The language within the plan results from input from staff, literally from every city department. Plan implementation will include partnerships with other governmental entities, nonprofits, businesses, residents. The 2040 plan was sent to referral. The 2040 plan was sent to referral to 26 different agencies for review and comment, with production of the newer revised draft, was sent back out in December, back to those referral agencies for the opportunity to comment. Next slide, please. With this slide, I will introduce two property-specific requests that are further described in attachment 15. The first request is for the Hawn property located on Westminster Boulevard, south of Big Dry Creek. Just as a reminder, this had been mixed-use activity center before, with the revised approach outlined to city council on December 5th, the proposal was to go to employment flex. We have a request from the landowner that was sent to me this morning, requesting to retain the mixed-use activity center, but to allow a continuing care retirement community development, CCRC, which is somewhat described in attachment 15. We also have a request from the Erickson Senior Living team to amend the land use map to be employment office institutional campus, as opposed to employment flex, and to amend the text of the office institutional campus designation to allow the continuing care retirement community, CCRC, use with residential up to 24 units per acre, as well as some associated definitions related to that use. The second request is for the Northgate property located southeast of 72nd Avenue and Federal Boulevard. That site, just to back up, was proposed for mixed-use neighborhood previously. The alternative recommendation was for low-density residential. They have come back and asked for consideration of a one-acre portion to be a commercial use, and the balance to be residential medium density. I will let the speakers tonight elaborate on both requests, however, staff's analysis is not supportive of including the first request via the comprehensive plan's action tonight, as we did not believe it aligned with the direction proposed relative to reducing higher format, higher-density format multifamily, supporting biotech and R&amp;D employment, and reducing water use. And we also have some concerns about the text amendments, as they could be used at other employment sites, if not crafted properly. If council is interested in this project, and we agree there are reasons to be interested, we would invite a site-specific concept plan review in a separate setting outside of the comprehensive plan, where we could really dig in before you. At a later time, we could review project details with council, such as impacts to water, sewer traffic, the size and scale of the proposed development. Staff is of the opinion that the text amendments to allow a continuing care retirement community really isn't necessary. We have one of these in Westminster already, we've allowed it, it's called Covenant Village over near Wadsworth and 92nd Avenue, and it's designated a suburban multifamily through the comprehensive plan. Without further amending the document, the 2040 plan could allow the Erickson proposal at the Hawn property with the urban multifamily designation, that would allow the use and the density that they're requesting. The planning commission did support the requests submitted by Erickson for the Hawn property in the 4-3 vote when they took it up last month. Moving on to the second request, which is that the Northgate property staff is supportive of this request, as it only impacts that one location, and it generally aligns with the idea of supporting homeownership and precluding multifamily development. That land use specifically does not allow multifamily, and would represent a more minimal impact to density and water resources, and would be a sensible transition between Westminster Station west across federal to the lower-density residential to the east. Planning commission was supportive of that request in a 7-0 vote. Staff, again, would caution council that whatever the speakers might say tonight, there is not a specific project before you, and therefore there has not been an analysis of impacts done, as you would see with a rezoning PDP/ODP in a quasi-judicial setting, but if council would like to explore that project further, we would encourage you to direct the team to work with staff to schedule a pre-application meeting and come back before you with a concept plan review at a later time. Next slide, please. Staff recommendation is to hold a public hearing, and upon conclusion of the hearing, approve an ordinance adopting the 2040 plan based on the criteria set forth in municipal code section 1132. Planning commission did recommend approval of the plan with 11 amendments and a vote of six to one. These amendments are laid out individually in attachment 14. The one commissioner with the dissenting vote on the plan stated she actually supported the plan but did not agree with the amendments, and therefore did not vote to support the plan. Staff recommendation incorporated eight of the 11 amendments identified by the planning commission. Next slide, please. The plan complements the city's vision for Westminster to be a city of beautiful, safe, well-maintained neighborhoods and destinations with a vibrant, diverse economy, rich and resilient environment, and strong sense of community and belonging, and meets all of these strategic plan goals. Next slide, please. This concludes the presentations, I'm happy to take any questions now, and if desired, after the public hearing is held.
Any questions before we hear? Councillor Isati?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you state again, I think you stated it, but what was the reason why staff did not like the change for mixed use for Hawn?
We, yeah, I don't know if I'd use the word "we do not like it." We think that the proposal is unique, and there has some merits. We do not think this is the means to go about in doing it, making changes to the citywide comprehensive plan without that specific level of review about project impacts, not to mention notifying adjacent neighborhoods. This is a fairly large-scale project, it would be, at this point in our history, probably the last large-scale residential development in the city.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we will see if there's questions after the presentations. That brings us, I will open the public hearing, it is 8:05, and we have nine people here to speak, and I understand one voicemail, and we did receive 12 additional emails.
We actually have 12 people signed up to speak now, and the first one is William Kearney.
We have six properties affected in this plan, I'm not going to ask for 30 minutes, but I am probably going to run over on the five, so I'd ask you to bear with me. My name's William Kearney, my address would be 104th and Sheridan. Mary McNally, Mayor Protem Demat, and councillors, I am a member of the Hewitt-Hawn family, owners of 750 acres in Westminster since 1955. We are not related to the Church Ranch development or owners, but your staff chose to include us on the Church Ranch focus area. In previous and the 2013 comp plans, our properties described as new higher-intensity office and mixed-use development is envisioned for the vacant 103-acre Hawn property, which is one of the city's last major opportunities to capture employment growth along the US-36 corridor that would front onto this key regional transportation corridor. Support of hotel, retail, commercial, and residential development may also be located in this area to complement the office district. The uses described after the city took 37.65 acres for the water treatment plant have changed to allow for manufacturing, light industrial, and similar uses. Which property is more attractive? In Judge Diego G. Hunt's 21-page omnibus ruling dated November 18, 2022, he states on page 13, "The parties," meaning the city and Hawn's experts, "agree that the highest and best use of the subject property is for a mixed-use development consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, with a maximum density of 30 to 35 units per acre and a low maximum combined floor area ratio for the property. The Erickson development proposal clearly fits within these parameters. The first we were aware of an office flex designation was the study session, just two weeks after the judge's ruling, and just a few days before the start of the water treatment plant trial. A new head of Westminster's Economic Development reported meeting with Realtor brokers in Boulder who endorsed this flex office designation for research and development. No data or reports were ever produced for this 11th-hour change, it was merely an informal meeting with the Boulder Realtors. It is a contrived use, was never discussed with our family, by the city staff, or by anyone with the city. The city could have contacted me the whole week after that, because I was the defendant in the lawsuit that you brought against our family for the water treatment plant. I have been working here since 1978, and almost everybody has my phone number. For the city council to adopt this use specific to our property is wrong. Why is our land being dumped in this category while Church Ranch is being changed from office flex to commercial? They have had almost 40 years to develop R&amp;D and failed. Staff says their change is to allow them to build a convenience store gas station without having to pay for a comp plan amendment. Doesn't seem fair to me. City attorneys declared police powers to reject a convenience center at our northwest corner of 104th and Sheridan location. We object to this last-minute designation of office flex. 25 years after the original comp plan and all amendments since designated it as a commercial mixed-use center. We request the city council, just as the planning commission recommended, retain our property in its previous commercial mixed-use designation, and accommodate Erickson's Continued Care Retirement Center and other future commercial mixed uses on our 103-acre parcel along US-36. Hotels, senior housing, medical facilities, and childcare facilities should be included as a primary use. Note I said the 103-acre site, because Andrew Spurgeon told the planning commission he was not sure the water treatment plant would ever be built, so was hesitant to designate it on the maps. Your next agenda item tonight is to authorize another quarter of a million dollars in outside legal fees for the water treatment plant litigation against our family. Is the city really, truly committed to the water treatment plant or not? The city says this change to flex is needed to preserve water availability and reduce rates, even though your studies and the mayor's roundtable on water concluded there is sufficient supply for all uses on the 2013 comp plan. How can the 2040 comp plan contemplate annexing another 300 acres just to the west of us if the city says current services may not be sufficient? Do you know where the current water for our land came to the city? It came with our property when annexed in 1970. The city's annexation letter says water is guaranteed because our property provides some very senior shares in the Farmers High Line Canal. Until the city could sell bonds to purchase water, we gave the city our proxy to vote the High Line Canal shares for 15 years. Now you're effectively taking away the water from us with this flex designation. Judge Diego Hunt ruled just last November, the annexation with water guarantee, sewer easements of 1973, 1974, and 1975 were valid and enforceable. He also ruled the access court, access point court orders of 1985, 1991, 1995, and 2000 for numerous access points from Sheridan, 104th, and Westminster Boulevard were also enforceable.
Mr. Kearney, your time is up.
Okay, are you going to give me some more time, please?
We have 11 other people, and I need to stick to time, to be fair.
The next speaker is Mike Farrow-Farrow.
Welcome.
My name is Mike Farrow, my address is 7777 South Depew Street. Picking up where Mr. Kearney left off in his text, at our Legacy Ridge West development, we were granted 957 water taps without expiration. We have used 604 taps, leaving 353 taps without expiration, to be retained for future use. This is enough additional taps for 706 multifamily units. We believe you were misled by staff in the past regarding these water taps. When you travel north on Sheridan Boulevard now, you see quality, single-family development. You do not see apartments there, because even though they were zoned, they were not developed as a part of the upscale golf course community. We brought a top-notch local and national home builder, home builders such as Genesee Rider, Standard Pacific, Lenar and Ryland, with new and distinctive architecture. Legacy Ridge has not sought or required any subsidies, like other city projects, close to our US-36 site. The Legacy Ridge project has cash flowed sufficient amounts to pay for the bonds for the main roads and the golf course construction. It has to be a perfect example of how public-private partnership works effectively. We are bringing to the city the Erickson Continued Care Retirement Housing Development as another quality development for the city. You can check out the Windcrest development near Santa Fe and C470 to the southern part of the metro area, and you will appreciate and be amazed at the quality that they bring to that development and are proposing to bring to the city of Westminster. By providing senior housing, it will open up existing residences for purchase by families with children, it will help reverse the recently announced closing of three-area elementary schools for lack of students. Erickson will provide many employment opportunities at higher wages than the flex designation of industrial and warehouse uses that hire few employees at low wages. In conjunction with local high schools and the junior college, healthcare vocations will be enhanced with on-the-job training and real wages. In the local Erickson community previously mentioned, the residents contribute generously to educational scholarship programs for the employees to help pay for their continued One final point, Mr. Spurgeon told the planning commission that these changes will eliminate up to 8,000 future residents in Westminster. We feel that that discriminates against the elderly, as well as young working professionals and their families with children who otherwise would live in Westminster. We believe that discrimination in the name of saving water is wrong, very wrong. Please retain the current use, the current designation on the comp plan that has been in place for many, many years, and allow the Erickson people to go forward with their development. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Amber Haught.
Hi, my name is Amber Haught, I live on 8862 Dudley Street. I'm here tonight because I am concerned. I would like to ask for more housing density. We know that's what we need for affordable housing, for attainable housing for our residents. We know that's the answer, so I don't understand why we're reducing that. We have hundreds of affordable units for seniors, we have thousands of seniors who qualify. During the study session in December, I heard councillor Baker say that housing isn't a government issue, it's a free-market issue. Tonight, what I'm hearing is that we are reducing multifamily units because they're generally occupied by renters? So what are you, what are you going to do to make homeownership more attainable if you don't want renters? You want a diverse economy, but you don't want a diverse population. The message that I'm hearing tonight is that if our residents don't have a certain amount of wealth, that you don't want them here. Is that the message you want to be sending? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Corinne Anaya. I think she may have left, but I want to make sure I give her a chance. The next speaker is Mary Ann Navarro.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Mary Ann Navarro, and I am here this evening as a director with Erickson Senior Living. Our address is 3235 Mill Vista Road in Douglas County, Colorado, and I appreciate the ability to talk with you tonight about continuing care retirement communities in Westminster's 2040 comprehensive plan. Erickson is a national leader- Erickson is a national leader in developing and delivering continuing care retirement communities, or C C R Cs. We own, manage, and operate more than twenty properties in eleven states across the country, and our model focuses on providing independent and assisted living, skilled nursing, and memory care options to our residents. While I am here to give an overview of our model and the need for C C R Cs in Westminster, you will hear from other speakers tonight about the three most important pillars of our proposal. They include smart water, usage and utility planning, robust economic development opportunities, and addressing critical housing needs. I'd first like to start by thanking the city of Westminster for their partnership during this process. We have been get engaged with the owner of this site since twenty twenty-one, and we are excited about the prospect to serve the region's seniors with a continuum of care and services. We appreciate the ability to work closely with staff on providing an alternative proposal for our use to be considered within the plan today. We are here tonight following a positive recommendation from the February fourteenth Planning Commission hearing to include our use within the comp plan, and we are grateful for the Planning Commission's recommendation in favor of our proposal. Our vision for this area includes a comprehensive and inclusive senior care community that allows Westminster seniors the ability to age in place and build better lives. Our model allows seniors to stay close to the place they call home and enjoy everything that Westminster has to offer, including close proximity to parks, open space, rec centers, retail, transportation, and libraries. We also understand there is an overwhelming need for senior resources and care, not only in Westminster, but both Adams, in Adams and Jefferson Counties as a whole. According to the recent Denver Regional Council of Government data, one in four residents in this area will be over the age of sixty by twenty forty. For Jefferson County, this will equate to nearly twenty-five percent of the county's total population and nearly fifteen percent of the total population for Adams County. And as you can see in your packets, there is a tremendous amount of data that demonstrates the market need for our, for use such as ours. According to census data provided to you, there are neighborhoods in Westminster and the larger North Metro region where twenty to thirty percent of the population, the residents are aged sixty-two and up, meaning there are hundreds, if not thousands, of seniors in Westminster who may need continuing care and services in the very near future. As these residents age, it is vitally important for our community's seniors and the city as a whole to provide continuing care options for this pending silver tsunami. First and foremost, this is more than just a senior living use, it's a comprehensive, inclusive set of care options that provides a continuum of services for seniors all in one location, and it's also an opportunity to create dynamic economic development opportunities that provides hundreds of jobs, a medical workforce with training, and intergenerational support. Secondly, this use provides critically important senior care and living options for those who want to stay and remain in Westminster during their later years, and it provides a mix of housing stock within city boundaries, which also helps other Westminster families by freeing up valuable housing options that will become available because of the proposed C C R C use. In other words, it provides housing options for today's seniors that helps alleviate the housing shortage and supply for tomorrow's families. Finally, as you'll hear later in the evening from our project team, we have implemented a water efficiency program within our use that responsibly manages and restricts water use throughout the site. But more importantly, we are proud of the community's support and partnership we have received for our vision. We are pleased to offer you this evening nearly half a dozen letters of support from business groups, educators, senior advocates, and Front Range Community College, which are all included in your packet. We ask that you include our proposal by adopting a C C R C use through the twenty forty comprehensive plan, and we're thankful for your consideration this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Richard Zenett.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hey, good evening, city council. My name is Caleb Zenett.
Sir, can you speak directly into the mic? Thank you.
My name is Richard Caleb Zenett. I'm with Aquasand Network located at forty-one hundred East Mississippi Avenue in Denver. Uh, Aquasand Network is a water and energy consulting firm that's been operating in Denver for forty-plus years now, um, and I'm here to review some of the water resource management, specifically as it relates to continuing care retirement communities, um, and the twenty forty comprehensive plan. So it's no secret that diminishing water resources have become one of the most significant hurdles to both municipalities and developers, which is why appropriate water budgeting is critically important to sustain growth and maintain the assurance of providing water resources to customers. Now, the city of Westminster has done a really incredible job of addressing this issue with their twenty twenty-one water supply plan, which is that overarching analysis of the city's current water supplies and future water needs. And some of the documents, guiding documents for that plan, um, include the twenty forty comprehensive plan. Now, one of the key factors of the supply plan and the water supply planning tool developed by staff, um, is that it reviews the water needs of different land use types on a per acre foot basis, which has been calculated from those thirty-three thousand plus accounts of the city services. A primary goal of the twenty forty comp plan is conserve water resources, which sees several of its undeveloped parcels move from a higher impact water use designation to a lower water land use designation. In reviewing some of these land use designations, the sixty-five acre Han property is currently designated for a mixed-use activity center, which does have the highest, uh, demand, water demand at five acre feet per acre, resulting in a total water budget of approximately three hundred and forty acre feet. Now, the two, two twenty forty comprehensive plan calls for an alternative land use designation of employment flex that will target a savings of a hundred and sixty-eight acre feet of water in total. One of the ways that significant water savings can be achieved for the city is through a continuing care retirement community, as these communities have considerably reduced water demands when compared to their mixed-use activity counterparts, approximately a forty percent reduction. The primary reasons for this reduced water demand is that, A, C C R C facilities have a much lower occupancy rate when compared to the traditional multifamily and single-family products coming in at around one-point-three persons per unit, whereas multifamily is at around two-point-two, single-family at two-point-seven, with the Westminster average currently at two-point-four-five. The second reason is that C C R C facilities have a lower water consumption on a gallons-per-capita per day basis, with C C R C users at forty gallons per capita per day for indoor usage and the current Westminster users at approximately sixty gallons per capita per day. Now, this water demand reduction in C C R C communities is actually recognized in several surrounding districts here in Colorado, such as East Trade Creek Valley, which reduces the water budget or allocation for those types of facilities by seventy-five percent when compared to their single-family equivalent counterparts. The city of, uh, Louisville, which reduces theirs by seventy percent, and up until twenty eighteen, the city of Westminster actually recognized this as well with a reduction in the water allocation, uh, by sixty-five percent for senior communities. And nationwide, there are various other examples of municipalities that show that reduced usage, uh, for these continuing care retirement communities. So to summarize, it's evident that staff has spent a lot of time and collected a lot of supporting data that have put into this water supply plan and the planning tool in support of the comprehensive plan to ensure an adequate water resources, you know, for the future for the city. However, as the supply plan states itself, it's not a full representation of those water demands, which really does come down to, you know, often cite specific designs. And in fact, there are several primary and secondary uses within the employment flex category or designation that are more subjective and ambiguous when it comes to water savings when compared to a C C R C use. Uses such as hotels, manufacturing, and eating establishments can potentially lead to large water users, whereas C C R Cs have measurable water savings as demonstrated by several retirement communities across the metro area. If C C R C is included as an approved land use, Erickson has committed that will be a responsible user of the water and its resources by designing a product that's highly efficient, going above and beyond the current conservation standards for both indoor and outdoor usage to ensure that significant water savings are achieved and they do align with the twenty forty comprehensive draft plan. Pending any questions, then I'm happy to answer as well. Um, that concludes everything I have to say.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Marcus Pockner.
Welcome. Welcome, thank you very much. Good evening, mayor, mayor pro tem, council members. I want to thank you very much for this opportunity to address all of you. I do want to acknowledge, Marcus Pockner, my address is fourteen eighty Humboldt Street, and I'm here as a land use consultant tonight for Erickson Senior Living. I want to take just a moment and acknowledge that this is a little bit of a timing conundrum. I want to be honest and step back for a moment and say that this is a challenge that we come to you in this setting, and I want to acknowledge the requests we are in. From a land use perspective, we have a timing conundrum here tonight. Um, as you all know, the process, and Andrew was terrific in going through the process with all of you, this twenty forty plan was first presented to all of you in twenty, in October of twenty twenty-one. Since that time, there's been very engaged and informative study sessions that have gone through that. That's been the regulatory process that has been ongoing, and as you all know, you recommended direct engagement to the property owners and other people involved in those undeveloped parcels. Concurrently, we have been going through a land use process diligently seeking to build a, develop a continuing care residential community in Westminster. This is not a site-specific request, but that has brought us together to talk about these elements. As you went through this continued engagement with staff on the comp plan, council had a number of priorities, namely to focus on economic development and significant water savings as you evaluate future land uses. Finally, and I want to say that this was so accurately described by your city manager in the memo to all of you, this is also being proposed as a binding comp plan, not an advisory comp plan. So it says you should have these types of uses when you come forward. So ladies and gentlemen, our conundrum here is if we came to you six months from now with a comprehensive plan change or amendment, you would simply look at us and say, where have we been over the last year, the last six months? Why have we not been engaged in this process? So I want to step back and be sure that you understand, we are not trying to do a site-specific application tonight. We understand there needs to be a very thorough process of community engagement and collaboration to build this. We want to simply acknowledge a use category that could be developed on a property that is part of the comprehensive plan. So ladies and gentlemen, this brings us forward to our request tonight. We fully support the comprehensive plan. I want to be sure and say that. We support all the work, your leadership, and the effort that has been matched by staff. But we also respectfully request our proposal for the comprehensive plan to be adopted tonight with the C C R C use allowed or added to the employment, office, and institutional campus land use designation. What that does, we believe, is a very additive or accretive amendment to what staff has proposed. A move to the campus or the institutional campus would provide many of the same primary uses that are allowed in employment flex, and I really want to focus on that. In both of the land use designations that Andrew put up in the chart, here are primary uses that are allowed in both. Professional offices and research and development labs, they are allowed in both uses. We have heard so much about R and D, your economic development staff has done a terrific job focusing on that. That is allowed in both land use designations. Secondary, secondary uses allowed in both, these are overlapping again. Manufacturing, warehousing, and support commercial, so like food service around commercial, those are allowed in both designations. So folks, we are asking for, again, an additive, another option to be allowed to the, added to the comprehensive plan. So why are we making this request? Why are we going through this discussion? The main thing that we are asking for and the definition that we work with staff on, this is what is allowed in the C C R C. It allows overnight stays, it allows a rehab facility, it allows hospice, and long-term nursing and care facilities. In other words, the office institutional designation allows the compromise to move forward, but it allows us to preserve all of those key uses, but it allows us to have a medically-centered, um, use that serves the continuing care community. It allows us to build senior housing and care for the seniors as we age in place in Westminster. So folks, I again want to just acknowledge that we are not here today for a site-specific application. We fully acknowledge that we would have to go through with the community and with staff through an O D P, an, uh, excuse me, a P D P, and then some type of site, specific planning process. We would do all the necessary studies, so even our water examples tonight are that of a type of use that we believe fits very neatly into the comprehensive plan being proposed. So I would, uh, close tonight, and we're certainly here as a team for any questions, to say that in allowing the C C R C language that we have proposed, it does not approve a specific project, but it does allow us to collaboratively work with staff, to work with the community, and work with the process to allow senior housing and a continuing care of senior housing to be built in the city. So again, our team is here for any questions you may have. We have a few more speakers, but we're really focused just in the general discussion of the item. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lisa Huff.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name's Lisa Huff. I am president and CEO of the Adams County Regional Economic Partnership, or A C Rep, is how I'll refer to it, it's quite a mouthful. Uh, we're based here in Westminster. Our offices are over at the former DeVry Campus, uh, now the Community Reach Center, so eighteen seventy, West one-hundred-and-twenty-second Avenue. A C Rep is a nonprofit organization that brings together regional businesses with local governments to work together on creating economic opportunities and prosperity through innovation for the future of our region. So thank you again for allowing me to share some thoughts tonight. I come before you on behalf of our Development Council members, who appreciate the efforts of the city of Westminster to update its twenty forty comprehensive plan. In fact, we had a presentation earlier this year from Andrew Spurley on the plan, and the committee then went through the process of, um, allowing me to come tonight and share these comments on the plan. The Development Council comprises over thirty members from the public and private sectors who convene on a monthly basis to direct the policy positions of A C Rep on local real estate and infrastructure developments. In addition, we welcome experts to come visit us on topics such as innovative housing option, water, and transportation. The goal is to really work together here to find solutions for our greater Adams County region so we can continue to prosper. Tonight, I'll touch on three key areas of importance when considering the adoption of the comprehensive plan in our view for the next twenty years. First, if the greater metro Denver region has learned anything over the past forty years, it is that a mix of diverse industries and a mix of land uses are key to our resiliency. It was essential that we expanded our economy from one based mainly around natural resources in the early nineteen eighties to now having a variety of employers throughout our region, from aerospace to healthcare to information technology. This is why our economy bounces back quicker than other regions of the United States and might, and that might have a less broad assortment of industries. Having a variety of employers and multiple industry clusters gives a region economic resiliency. This was true during the past couple of years during recovery from the business impacts of the pandemic. However, we are still not certain what the future holds, what our office and workplace needs will be in the future. Many businesses are still working in hybrid or flexible arrangements, and experts believe those arrangements will continue for the foreseeable time in order to retain and attract talent to our workforce. Therefore, I would encourage the council to adopt a plan that allows for balanced uses of land and flexibility to meet future needs. Second, having a variety of employers also means supporting local employees with different desires for transportation, housing, and local services. Workforce trends have demonstrated that employees want to live close to where they work, shop, and recreate. They want a mix of housing options from just starting out with a small apartment to housing a large family with nearby schools, to seniors that want to stay in the communities they know and love. However, in the current economy, we no longer are providing enough options to fill our community's housing preferences. A C Rep champions improvements in the region's networks and roads and highways. We also support efforts to build more transit-oriented developments and support innovative housing op, housing solutions as ways to help provide more options for more citizens. One option we do support is the proposal to allow continuing care retirement communities. We feel these types of facilities will provide avenues to address our housing challenges by allowing more seniors to stay in Westminster or the region, but move out of their existing homes to other suitable housing options, therefore opening up more inventory in existing homes. In addition, we see such facilities as wonderful additions for workforce training programs in the healthcare field and a place for students, for example, from Front Range Community College to get experiences, internships, and apprenticeships. In addition, the County Workforce Center trains people to enter the culinary industry through their program work options, and we see this type of campus as another place for opportunities for new, great careers for people moving up the, um, moving up in their careers. Finally, A C Rep shares your concern. Finally, ACREP shares your concerns about limitations on infrastructure and water. However, we believe there are ways to continue to meet the needs of our communities through sustainable water use. We see innovation around many water-dependent industries, options for commercial property standards, and tools to manage residential use that we may need to consider for future sustainable communities. Just last week, we heard from a major regional developer that through innovative plans was able to cut their water usage by 51%. In conclusion, ACREP appreciates the thoughtful and lengthy process to develop a 2040 comprehensive plan. We simply advocate that you remember diversity of uses is essential to building a resilient future for our economy. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kathy Dilger, 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 sorry. Welcome.
Thank you. You had it first, right the first time. So good evening, members of the city council in Westminster. I'm Kathy Dilger. I live at 2908 West 11th Avenue Circle in Broomfield. So I'm a neighbor to Westminster, and I enjoy shopping in Westminster, enjoy a lot of the restaurants, a lot of the trails, and outdoor space. We loved to golf at Highland Hills as well. I'm proud to, to live close by. However, I work down in Douglas County for Erickson Senior Living. I've driven there for 10-plus years. I've put over 200,000 miles on my car in that experience. I'm here tonight to urge you to support this continuing care retirement community in Westminster as a part of the community proposal for the 2040 Westminster Comprehensive Plan. In my role at Erickson, I serve as the Associate Executive Director, and I support a little more than 1,000 employees in that single location. We have staff ranging from medical professionals, managers, hundreds of other personnel. And a lot of those professionals, we have everything from physicians, physician assistants, medical assistants, care associates, nurses, therapists on our team. In addition, we have over 10 restaurants in our community. And so we have a lot of culinary professionals and managers on that end. Erickson provides hundreds of jobs and workforce development opportunities for a wide range of positions and pay. One of the components I'd like to highlight this evening is our commitment and dedication to providing critically important clinical training on-site by partnering with area schools. In the last two years, our facility down, our community down south provided nearly 140 nursing student and clinical training hours through partnerships with local community colleges. We've already garnered that support from Front Range Community College if we're able to do this site in the north. And as the demand and growth in the healthcare workforce continues to expand, Erickson can play a key role in job training and workforce development opportunities in our Westminster area. I also want to stress that our facilities provide more than job training and workforce development. We aim to hire those very individuals that we are training. It creates a win-win situation for the schools and for our community. These jobs also contribute back to Westminster's economy because these individuals will shop and eat at the local restaurants in the area. That will have a big impact on the community. I've spoken to you a lot tonight about our workforce, but I would be remiss if I didn't share the impact of what our residents bring in our community. Our seniors really are committed to their community. 60% of our seniors in the south move from within a 10- to 15-mile radius of our community, and I believe that that will be true in Westminster as well. So we'd help those seniors stay in this community. They do a lot of things to support and give back to the greater community. One of those significant things you've already heard about tonight, but they do a fundraiser to support high school seniors who work in our dining program and fund an $8,000 scholarship for them. Last year, they raised almost $400,000 for that effort. In addition, our employees have an opportunity to give back to the greater community by allowing, we allow 40 hours of volunteer time as well. I live up north. I've put a lot of miles on my car. I'd love nothing more than for this community to launch in this community of Westminster. But I would also urge you to consider adopting the land use for, in the, in the 2040 Westminster Comprehensive Plan as a part of this proposal.
Thank you. The next speaker is Chris Stimson. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, councillors, city staff. We are in a housing crisis. We know that. And, and what a housing crisis does, it means it negatively impacts sustainable, coherent communities. I'll give a simple example. My own property, I have a 35-year-old, single-family house of 2,000 square feet. It's grown two and a half times in value since I purchased it 12 years ago this month. And what I pay monthly in mortgage and escrow matches closely what is being asked for single-bedroom rentals, not only in Denver, but also in the new downtown Westminster. I, I couldn't afford my own house today if I were going to buy it. So what else does this housing crisis mean? There are unhoused people, we know, all over the area. There are people living in tents who have jobs. They have, they actually have paying jobs, but they have to live in a tent because they can't afford a house around here. You would think that something would need to be done in a situation like this, but council seems to be going in the opposite direction. You know, as I noted, I own my home and I'm able to make payments on it. Why should I be concerned about others' abilities to afford domiciles in my area of residence? It's because I believe that if a community does not reflect in the way it's made up the full spectrum of those who contribute to the way it functions, it can't consider itself a sustainable community. If a city requires the contributions of people from many socio-economic groups to function properly, for the city to function properly, you know, executive all the way down to unskilled labor, then that city must be able to offer the potential of residing within it to all those levels of people in order to call itself a complete and healthy community. And yet, there are many in Westminster, including apparently city council going by this amended comprehensive plan, who are reluctant to accept that to do this means allowing the building of habitations within city limits whose costs are more commensurate with more restricted levels of income. I, as I said, I recently investigated the market rate rents of one-bedroom apartments in the new downtown area of Westminster and calculated that, according to data published by the city's own Office of Economic Development, typical workers in managerial and professional positions can only expect to afford between one-half and two-thirds of the quoted rents for one-bedroom apartments in these developments. And yet, again, according to the WIDA documentation, the existence of affordable housing in the community stabilizes the workforce, attracts businesses, revitalizes neighborhoods, and reinforces smart growth patterns. We cannot expect people to provide essential services in a city in which they cannot expect to live. So I would say, instead of going in the opposite direction to helping absolve the, the housing crisis, what I say is we should instead be working to show the state and the world that Westminster is a leader in accommodating all levels and classes of people in its community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tim Peg. Welcome.
Thank you. So I think you should vote no on the current comp plan before us tonight. I have concerns, my biggest concern is about the prevalence of low-density zoning, but I'm also concerned about the values expressed in this comp plan. I skimmed through the potentially prohibited uses paragraph in there, and I noticed that thrift stores are listed alongside tattoo parlors and adult businesses. At least one city councillor has tattoos. Why are we worried about that? Are we worried that we're going to attract the seedy characters who sit on council? And why are we clutching our pearls over thrift stores? Another thing that I'm worried about is that I noticed countryside is, would be zoned for large-lot residential now. The minimum lot size in that case would be 0.4 acres. You could not build countryside as it exists today under that proposed zoning. That's weird to me. The focus on commercial and not residential development will result in worse traffic because where are those workers going to come from? Other communities. And that puts us in this weird spot where taxpayer money that goes to paying to fix roads is largely subsidizing folks who live outside our community. It's just, that's just strange. And the last bit is I think it's immoral. I think it's immoral that we zone so much of the city for single-family housing because it makes multifamily housing artificially scarce. So if you can afford a single-family home, you get artificially cheap land. But if you can't afford a single-family zone, you get artificially high rent. And if you're someone on the margins who's just a couple hundred bucks a month shy of making rent, that would be really insulting. And I think it's positively immoral, and I hope you vote no.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is James, sorry, James McImus. Welcome.
Hi, I'm James McImus. I live at 5405 West 97th Avenue in Westminster. I neglected to do my homework, so I don't have any written notes, but it seems really simple in this day and age that the idea of decreasing density for residential units, given where we are with the dearth of affordable housing, the inability of kids just starting out to be able to afford to buy a place, the inability of older people to, of limited means at least, to be able to stay in town and afford even their current mortgage or have any sort of affordable housing, would lead one to believe that more density, not less, is a good idea. And I think that the, you know, the things that Tim and Chris said about the ability to house a diverse workforce is important. And the idea that Westminster wants to hold itself out as a model community of sustainability, but doesn't want to allow for dense dwellings doesn't make sense at all. Also, if we look at water use, just the sustainability of Westminster's water, a multifamily building uses way less water than a single-family, the same number of single-family homes because landscaping around single-family homes has to be watered. So if all other things are equal, a single-family home uses more than an apartment does for water. So it seems sort of counterintuitive that we would be holding ourselves out as some model for the country in community-based sustainability and et cetera, and then saying, oh yeah, by the way, only rich people can live here. It just sort of doesn't make much sense. So I would urge you to reconsider that part of the comp plan. I haven't been through it enough to have comments on the rest of it that would be cogent, but, but just the density portion seems misguided. So I would urge you to reconsider. Thanks so much.
Thank you. That was the last live speaker we had signed up. And we have one more, boys move.
That's correct. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Dr. Tricia Johnson, and I'm the Vice President of the Westminster Campus at Front Range Community College at 3645 West 112th Avenue in Westminster. As you may know, Front Range is the largest community college in the state, serving nearly 10,000 students a year right here in Westminster. We are proud of the work we do with thousands of Westminster students every day to prepare them for our local workforce. On behalf of our Front Range Community College campus, I appreciate the city's approach toward work, supporting workforce development through its land use strategies and economic development planning. But more importantly, I would like to offer our support for including the proposed Continuing Care Retirement Community use near the 104th and Westminster Boulevard location as part of the city's 2040 Comprehensive Plan. We support the ability to provide critically important job training and internship opportunities at this location, particularly for our 150 nursing students who can obtain valuable clinical training experience just down the street from our Westminster campus. As the demand and need for our healthcare workers expands throughout the region, it becomes more important to identify and leverage new partnerships that provide workforce development and training opportunities for our students in Westminster. Our campus regularly partners with healthcare providers across the north metro area to place our students in healthcare facilities and settings to meet their clinical training needs. As demand for healthcare workers grows, it can sometimes be challenging to place students in nearby healthcare facilities where they can receive the appropriate supervision and training opportunities to meet their clinical hour requirements in time. We are grateful for the partnerships we already have with surrounding healthcare providers. And we appreciate the effort by Erickson Senior Living to begin the dialogue and partnership with our campus about future workforce development opportunities for our students. Our campus is excited about the potential this opportunity could bring to our existing pipeline of nursing students and how it can serve as a valuable tool for placement of our students to help meet their clinical training needs. And while we are proud of the fact that we offer so many programs to train Westminster's workforce, we also understand the importance of providing permanent, well-paying job opportunities for our healthcare, healthcare students once they're finished with our training program. We see time and time again that our students ultimately end up working at the location or in the community where they intern, which means allowing the opportunity for this use could translate to providing hundreds of job opportunities for our Westminster students down the road after graduation. So the conversation before you this evening should also be focused on looking at the larger picture and overall economic development potential for our students and local workforce. Not only would this use provide key nurse training opportunities for CNA's and RNs, but it would provide a full circle of workforce development opportunities by potentially hiring and placing those same students within our very own Westminster community. And finally, while I've spoken at length about the potential for an incredible partnership that would support Front Range's nursing program, it's also important to note the valuable job opportunities this use would provide for many of our other students at our Westminster campus. For example, we have thousands of other students in Westminster who are seeking both part-time and full-time job opportunities close to school. We are excited for the potential to partner with Erickson on providing hundreds of other job possibilities through training in hospitality, management, dining, security, and other professional opportunities, all conveniently located within just a mile or two of our Westminster campus. So I appreciate the opportunity to demonstrate Front Range Community College's support for the inclusion of the Continuing Care Retirement Community use before you this evening. The partnership between the City of Westminster and the Front Range Community College is incredibly important in the training and development of our local workforce. And we are grateful for your consideration of our support for this exciting opportunity for our Westminster community. Thank you.
And is there anyone that didn't get to speak that wasn't signed up? See no one. It is 8:50. See, no one. It is 8:58. I will close the public hearing, and we are going to take a break. Uh, city manager, do we have anything? Does anybody want to report or talk about anything anybody has asked questions about? Or are we ready for council questions?
Mayor, I think we're ready for council questions, but Andrew is certainly prepared to speak. And so if he'd like to come up and approach the podium, he's more than happy to answer your questions or any follow-on comments or questions based upon testimony.
It's good to be here in person, too. And online is just not the same.
Do you have anything to say before we start our questions?
Well, there was, you heard a variety of comments, and I thought people made good points. John, my manager would like to speak.
Welcome.
Well, thank you, council. And thank you for your patience tonight and all the listening that you've been doing. And we appreciate the Ericsson team coming in here and talking about their concept and what they would like to do with the property. We understand that the council may want to consider going in that direction. We would recommend that what they're proposing is not the easiest way to do it. Senior housing is a primary permitted land use in urban multifamily, which is the density that they're looking for. If the council wants to go in that direction, we'd recommend going the easy route in urban multifamily and not trying to rewrite any of the provisions in the flex employment.
Okay. Questions from council, councillor or mayor, put them.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you to everybody who came out and spoke, staff, for the presentation. I know this has been a long road on this comp plan, and I appreciate the work that's been put into it. I did have a handful of questions that I sent, and I wanted to just make sure they get on the record because they, you know, there were reasons I asked. So I'll start with the Harris Park one. And I just want to make sure that we clarify exactly what that is because I think my question came from, I've had multiple conversations with community members, and even when we did the Harris Park study, you know, there was the discussion about, you know, "It doesn't have teeth," is one of the terms I've heard used. But I just want to, like, at a summary level, have you explain exactly how that plan interacts with the comp plan and what it does and doesn't do, just so that, you know, as part of this process that we're clear exactly what that portion means and why we did that.
Sure. Great question, because it is a little confusing even among our own staff. Sometimes there's a little confusion there. That, the Harris Park plan was called the Community Vision Plan. And so the purpose of it was to try to document the vision of the community. We know there's a variety of viewpoints down there, sometimes in direct conflict with each other. So we were looking for, you know, how can we build a consensus plan for the area considering that there are needs related to the public spaces and historic buildings, small businesses, and housing? And so that was really the desire of that plan, was to document the community's vision for the area and compile that into a plan that the city can reference, but without going the full step of a specific plan, such as Westminster Station or downtown, where it's hard zoning and specific rules. So it really affords the opportunity on the development side to look case by case and study that vision and see how that aligns with the comprehensive plan, with council's vision, with our resources, traffic, and those kind of things. It also set forth a fairly robust implementation scheme and programming for that area. Noteworthy is the current 72nd Avenue corridor work that's underway. So that's one of the differences. The comprehensive plan really just acknowledges that it's out there. It draws the boundaries and describes the document, but it doesn't add or take away any of the power of that document.
Great. The other thing I wanted to hit was kind of on our affordable stock. And I know that part of the plan, and I actually have the numbers in front of me. And so part of the discussion was around, like, what the right number of affordable units is. And if I understood the answer right back from staff is as the next portion of this, that's going to be one of the next studies that we do to figure out exactly what that, what we think that target number for built-out is. Is that correct?
Yeah, I didn't craft that response, but I was in the loop. And so you're correct. One of the immediate things that's actually in your strategic plan as an action to do at the end of the year is the housing needs assessment. And so that'll give us a better baseline of understanding where we are, what we need, as well as the different types of housing. Is it affordable? Is it senior? Is it so forth? And potentially, depending on the outcome of that, we can have additional conversations. Do we need to come back and do some? Do we need to come back and do some additional cleanups to the comprehensive plan? Is it our code? Is it, you know, programming of financial assistance? You know, what are those, what's that toolkit that's going to help us meet the housing needs?
Great. And just for sake of the record, the number that I got back was 2,265 affordable units. And we have 598 that are designated senior. And part of the reason that I asked about that is, you know, I certainly understand the need for the senior housing. So I appreciate the proposal that's come forward. I guess my desire, you know, to share it with the team is whatever the right way to look at that development is what I would want to do. Because I think that there is need for a diverse stock of senior housing, just like there's a need for a diverse stock of all housing, which I think you've, you and your staff have tried to hit in this document. So the last thing I wanted to hit with you is we heard one of my fans discussing prohibited use. And so I want you to talk about exactly how prohibited use works. Because certainly there are things on here such as tattoo shops or gun shops that I certainly am not against. But I understand there's a place for everything and not, not everything belongs in every place. So maybe you could talk with us just so the public understands how the city looks at some of those prohibited uses. Because I can go through this list and find different businesses throughout our city that do fit those categories. So I think it's important that the public understand, you know, how the city approaches those uses.
Absolutely. And the same question came up at the Planning Commission. So we understand it's maybe a thorny issue or hard to understand. Typically, these are uses that, and the reason that, you know, it's called potentially prohibited is that they're not prohibited, but they're given a lot more scrutiny when they're brought in. And these are, these are those individual uses that we bring to council typically through a PDP and say, council, do you agree with this use at this location? So it's a little more scrutiny. This is essentially carryovers. This, this has been in our prior comprehensive plans. And we've, we kind of re, we've reformatted and relocated it. But it's, it's something that the city's done throughout its comprehensive plans. And again, it doesn't actually prohibit them. It just means we're going to give that case by case a little more scrutiny, thinking about the impacts. Are there compatibility issues? And that lends when we bring it to you.
I think that is very helpful, especially looking at this list, to be able to scrutinize those different uses and how we allow them. So I don't have any further questions at this point. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Nammella?
I had a few questions that I had provided to staff earlier today. I'm not going to go through every one of them because they'd probably want to kill me. They're very detailed. But one of the questions that I had was regarding the economic resilience goal number five, 5.1, which is that we're supplying, that our housing supply is essentially going to be served by a broader regional context. And I think I would like staff to provide a little bit of, you know, with, with respect to all of the input that was received through the community outreach through 2018, 2019, even reflected in some of the comments here tonight. Can you talk to us about just how our approach with having other markets provide the housing that we need is responsive?
Yeah, I think, I think the point is, and it's described a little bit better in attachment nine, the existing conditions planning challenges report. But the, the point I was trying to make is actually it's, the job and housing market is regional in nature. It's the 36th corridor in particular, from Denver to Boulder, is a regional housing and employment market. And there's significant flows of labor across municipal jurisdictional boundaries. So it was really getting to the point that there's an interrelatedness, as you allude to. But it's not just the housing. It's also the jobs and it's very fluid among our boundaries.
Okay. The other questions I had were, well, some of them were around outreach. So we had, I have to commend, there was great outreach done for this plan in 2018 and 2019. Understandably, it came to a screeching halt in early 2020 and some efforts were made to provide meeting in a box, things like that. What I'm focusing on is, so we worked as a city to develop the comprehensive plan with all of that outreach and for the 2021 version of the comprehensive plan. This version that is being proposed is significantly different in the land use plan that is proposed. And so I'm trying to understand really, aside from hanging out at a few events, like the chamber, what significant outreach was done post COVID in relation to the changed economy that we have, the changed needs, which are even more dire in relation to these, this new land use plan?
Good questions. So, so just to be mindful, the, you know, roughly 500 acres that are changing are still roughly, I don't know. You know, we're still talking about that two and a half percent of the city's land area. So most of the city is very stable and will remain as it is. We, you know, to be frank, we did not do a lot of additional outreach. We did a lot of outreach going into the prior plan. We heard from city council that that plan, you know, wasn't the direction that was desired. And we, we work with city council and your constituents to bring the plan in a new direction. So we really felt that it was really council that was helping drive staff with the revised direction. And, you know, but we did do some of those contacts, as you suggested. And I fielded a lot of questions from individuals presented when invited. But we did not go and hit all the events and stuff at the same level as we did before. So that's, that's a fair statement.
And I've heard in the past that we're over retail. Is that right?
Yeah, there was the retail strategy that I think was presented to council last fall sometime. And so for our population, we're absolutely very over retailed. But part of that has been the advantage of our strategic location and that we attract shoppers from adjacent jurisdictions, which is why we've been heavily sales tax on our revenue on the budget side. But I think we're aware that some of our older retail centers need some TLC and that's intended to be part of plan implementation.
And yet we're, we're not allowing for any change in use or diversification of use on those retail sites like Brook Hill or along Federal.
We're pulling back on the housing aspects, correct. But I think we're, we're open to other strategies for those centers. One of the things that is included in the plan in the commercial is actually increasing the FAR from 0.35 to 0.45 to allow some potential more infilling of those sites with commercial uses.
And the office environment, not so great, right? After COVID?
Absolutely.
And can you remind me how many additional acres we've added for office and employment use?
I believe that's 90, I want to say about 90. That number here. The, the, 94. That was additional employment land. And so with this plan, we merged the office R and D and the flex light industrial. And that was a post-COVID change, working with our economic development staff to think about. If we're not going to get the traditional office campuses, what is the future of employment? And that need to support the startups and the incubator spaces and those flex buildings that can be shifted over time. So, you know, in the letters provided to city council, there's a number of, of commercial property owners very supportive of the change to the employment flex. They're, they're looking forward to that change with this plan.
Those that had the light R and D?
Right.
Beforehand. Okay. I'm just looking for what's useful. Can I ask also what, on the Han property? That's on the, what do we call it? Whatever, the Han property where Erickson is looking for some type of residential allowance? What's the footprint? Are we looking at the entire blob of employment flex that's shown there? Or is it a smaller footprint?
The, the, the plan that's before you tonight has the southern, I want to say 37-ish acres for the proposed treatment plant site and then the northern 67-ish acres for the employment flex. That's what's shown in the plan.
Is that, is the request to change the entire area?
That's correct. As I understand it, yes.
Okay. And I'm just curious. So let's see, somebody brought it up. And I've mentioned this before with Dr. Cog. We've got, our senior households are doubling over the next 20 years. Our households with children are staying the same. Our households of 25 to 34. Yeah. So we're going to have a significant housing mismatch in the region. And I can only assume somewhat here as well. Did you do any analysis on the household incomes of our seniors?
We, we did do that analysis that is, I apologize. That's not something I have right in front of me. There was a report done when we, in the first phase of the comprehensive plan. It was in fact, our first task was sort of a, a report of, was quite a profile of community. And I know that was looked at. I don't remember that off the top of my head. The plan itself does add a goal on senior housing, something that we don't really have policy direction on when we get cases that we've brought before council. So chapter seven, page 77 does include a goal on, you know, staff definitely agrees there's a need for senior and special needs housing. There's a relatively high number of persons in Westminster, not just seniors with disabilities. And one of the, one of the concepts we talked about, and this, this came through the community engagement was, and it's, it's here in the plan, was to locate senior housing within residential areas so that you have access to different generations to support. And so that's why staff has not been supportive in the past when we've come to council, when there's been senior housing off, isolated, like in a, in the middle of Park Center or some business environment. Was, we think it would be better integrated with existing neighborhoods where there's generations to support seniors.
So, I mean, as I understand it, just now within, because I did look up part of our existing conditions report. And we have about existing 13% of our seniors are under the poverty line. And right now, the average income for seniors in the state of Colorado is around $50,000. I don't know if that's their household or per person. But let's face it, all the, all the old ladies, they end up outliving their husbands. So eventually they'll be stuck on a, you know, a smaller income than they're used to. I can only imagine with our economy and the student loan debt and all the other debt that folks are facing now, that as we age, me included, we're going to have much more limited incomes. Just looking at numbers for projects like the Erickson project, no one will be able to afford that. $4,000, $5,000, up to $8,000 a month. You break $50,000 and that's at the average by 12. That's a little over $4,000 a month for everything. So housing is really important. And with our household, our senior households doubling, those that are going to be under poverty likely increasing. Just if we kept 13%, we would need 4,000. If we assume 25% of our, like Jefferson County is going, 25% of our population is going to be older adults. 13% are in poverty. We're looking at, at minimum, like 4,000 senior housing units needed. We haven't mapped that. Where would it go? I, I think the policies are great in the comp plan, but we aren't mapping in association with those policies. So I'm having a hard time rectifying that. I don't know if you need to answer that.
We, well, as, as mentioned, we will be doing the housing needs assessment that would look at, you know, all the population cohorts and income schemes, or income groups and identify the housing needs associated with those and potentially bring back updates to the plan or city codes. You know, staff presented a list of, I believe it was 27 properties at the December 5th study session where we could bring down land use in the interest of supporting the goals that were identified for employment. I think one reason staff was comfortable with that is that we know over time there will be comprehensive plan amendments because there always are. So when those opportunities come up, whether it's Erickson or something else and we can have, you know, the policy discussion, do we feel this supports the comprehensive plan? And if so, is it a, a good project for the community?
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Counselor Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to do a couple of things, though I have to remark that it's really sometimes difficult. We're not doing East German Soviet central planning here. What we're doing is we're putting the guidelines for our city to complete, our really majority to. And sometimes I think we want to do central planning, which is be a very bad thing to do. I'd like to go back to and congratulate you because this plan was driven by how much water we have. And even this plan exceeds our minimum reliable annual water supply by 400 acre feet a year. But that's only about 2%. So, and there are so many unknowns in it. I mean, every land use we've designated here, there's, there's a range that it can fall within to. But I think that's one of the excellent parts of this plan is that we've tried to match the growth that we're going to allow. And remember, this comp plan is not only a promise to the owners of the property that are undeveloped and the potential people who move in, but it's a promise to all our citizens about what grows next to them. And I think that's a very important promise to make and one we should keep to our current citizens. And by doing the water supply, we're not going to keep stealing water from original Westminster. And one only needs to drive around original Westminster and some of our older neighborhoods who actually bought and paid for the water we use today to see how they've been negatively impacted by the price of water, which has shifted water away from them. So that's a congratulations. The next, I'd like to know, how many more multifamily units are we going to get with this plan? And please include the new downtown, the train station and the uplands.
I tried, I have those numbers. I just want to make sure I state them in a way that's satisfactory to you.
Thanks. And if we, and if we can't get it good the first time, we'll just try again. It's okay.
In terms of, in terms of multifamily units on the unentitled lands that don't have applications working, we anticipate 932 units.
And on the ones that are entitled?
We have, this is where it gets a little trickier. The downtown Westminster plan is regulated by service commitments as opposed to housing units. And downtown, last time I checked, had 776 service commitments remaining out of the 1,350.
Doesn't that equate to 1,500 more units? Because isn't it like 0.43 per?
It's, it's 0.5 for multifamily. But as you know, we also are getting, you know, some of the townhomes, there's 0.7. And then there's some senior housing that's coming. And so it's
About 0.3 or something.
Hard to back into the math exactly there, yeah.
So 1,500 more or less, the new downtown?
Look at my ED. She's shaking her head. Okay, good. Westminster Station has 778 units, we believe, left. Westminster Station has seven hundred and seventy-eight units, we believe, left. This assumes that the other projects all proceed, uh, which you haven't, uh, those, those, none of those are going vertical yet. So we're, we're kind of assuming that some of them are still going forward. We know there's some infrastructure challenges down there.
So that's eight hundred in addition to what, four hundred in the pipeline?
And then, um, the uplands development included one thousand one hundred and thirty-two multifamily units. Split between a hundred and forty on Planning Area A six, three hundred and seventy-five on A eight, three hundred and seventy on C one and two hundred and forty-seven on C two.
And then it's got about a thousand single family units. Even though I only asked you multifamily.
Yeah, I think their total unit is twenty-three fifty, so if you backed out the eleven thirty-two, then that leaves twelve hundred-ish.
And are there any other entitled ones right now that are moving, uh, that are in holding pattern or moving forward that we need to count?
No, but I think what we would remind council of is what we, um, advised council of back on December fifth, that there's some sites that have some special vested rights. Things that have vested rights differ from our standard code provisions. And so, uh, the north part of the Brookhill Shopping Center at Ninety-second and Wattsworth potentially could add multifamily in the commercial center there. And then, um, at the promenade, there is opportunity for additional multifamily there adjacent to where the Avalon Bay recently was developed.
Yeah, and they were given like, uh, like a ten-year entitlement, weren't they?
John? Ten years sounds good, okay. Those are not things that we have plans in for, but they're potentially out there.
Right.
I don't know exactly how much longer they have in their vesting, but they originally had ten years. They do have a few years left, to my recollection.
Right, so, so, so we're looking at like in the neighborhood of seven thousand more residences and, uh, that'd be potentially fourteen, sixteen thousand more people who all drink water.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm not disagreeing with your math, but we, uh, my math is focusing on what's additional out there. So I don't necessarily have all the numbers for the stuff that's working right now. So in terms of just the raw land, what's left, um, we anticipate nine hundred and thirty-two multifamily units and a thousand thirty-one single family units. Overall, this would actually lower the city's population about forty-eight hundred people compared to, um,
According to what's the current?
Well, or based on the, from the twenty-twenty-one draft with the change. So we've, we've shaved off that part.
Right, which was absolutely excellent. The next thing I'd like to do is, uh, you said that we didn't, this council didn't formally explore the ADUs and ADUs weren't in the plan before. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
Uh, they, they, they were not, they're not in our existing adopted, uh, comprehensive plan. They've been in this draft, uh, all along. I, I think you're correct that since the seating of this city council, we did not have a specific policy discussion about that.
Exploring, you're looking at the benefits and the negative impacts and all that.
Correct, it was, it was asked by more than one counselor in the questions that we've, we've sent out. There wasn't info only back on October third of, uh, last fall. But you're right, there hasn't, there hasn't been like a deep dive, um, policy discussion about it.
So we don't even know if anyone wants to build more than a handful of them?
Uh, correct, we did do a survey last, uh, November, I believe. The response rate was, I believe, of two hundred and eighty-something people responded. Eighty-nine percent were actually in favor, which surprised me. But there would be a lot of tech, technical stuff to figure out, even if it, even if it's included in the comprehensive plan, we'd have to come back with our development code, figure out a tap fee structure, figure out what are, what are the parameters for building one on a lot? The setbacks, the lot coverage, the height, do we want it to look like the main house? There's a lot of sausage making that we would come back to with a code change.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Asadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have a question and it's linked to the comment you made about, um, the, so the housing needs assessment that we're going to do, do by the end of the year. It's not done, so we don't know the needs, was the assumption that I heard from you? But in reality, I think you know and we all know, and the whole state, the whole country is going through a housing crisis. We're not blind. We, I was looking through here, I saw twenty seventeen housing need assessment that we did, twenty twenty housing need assessment that we did. Both of them say critical. We need affordable housing. We need senior housing. Both of them state, we need, um, housing for our seniors specifically, because both of them predicted. And this is before the pandemic in twenty seventeen. And even in twenty twenty, both saw the rising share of senior, of older residents. So my question is, it's kind of a leading one, but if we are over-retailed and under-housed, how is it appropriate to propose a revised plan that reduces density?
Uh, that's a fair question. We did do the housing needs assessments previously, as, as you noted, and twenty seventeen one was actually brought to council. The twenty-twenty-one never moved forward because there were questions about it being done during COVID. You know, I think we believe that it was, staff has brought forward a revised plan responsive to what, most of what city council has asked for, and so we believe we're being responsive to that. I would note, um, not just in the housing front, but related to this, um, silver tsunami that I think we all know is coming. Uh, an implementation item we propose is to participate in the Denver Regional Council of Government's Boomer Bond Program, which is, uh, something they do for free, um, where we talk about not just housing, but all the other varied needs of seniors. We're one of the few communities in the front range that hasn't already done that. Most of our neighbors already have. Uh, and so we'd like to look holistically at, at the senior needs, um, which could be informed by our housing needs assessment, uh, to be done. But I think we as staff needed to know where council was landing on the policy position with the plan so we can go back and figure out where does that leave us for housing and how do we close that gap? What are the appropriate strategies that align with the other priorities of this council?
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Baker?
Sorry?
Anyone else? Let me get my questions out here. Since we've been talking about housing, let me just ask, um, are we flexible enough in what's in here that we could truly look at affordable housing in the sense of there are so many different ways you can build, whether they're tiny homes or whatever. I mean, they can be duplexes, they can be different kinds of things besides multifamily. So is everything in here flexible enough? We can look at those things and have those conversations, especially with Prop one twenty-three coming up and some money there. There, there's going to have to be money somewhere to help builders build something that isn't four hundred thousand dollars, because we don't control what the costs are out there. And a magic wand doesn't make affordable housing without something else coming into it. So what are we doing to look at all of those pieces so we can get some better? Because you've heard this council state, we know we have apartments, but our focus is getting people to be homeowners. And so, um, how do we, is this flexible enough that we can have that conversation later on of looking at those kinds of things for our community?
Sure, uh, if I understand the question correctly, um, we have, uh, you know, as you know, the, the comprehensive plan establishes a series of different residential typologies. Only the residential large lot, um, which is a very limited, um, geography, is limited to single family, um, housing products. The others, the residential low density, which is our most prevalent. There's a listing of different product types, uh, single family, paired homes, duplexes, townhomes, uh, to name a few, senior housing. And then as you go into the higher density categories, that range further increases. So those are some of the things already embedded in here, uh, as well as the, um, in the low density and the medium density, the opportunity to, um, slightly increase the density subject to council approval so we can have that side-by-side evaluation if, if we would agree to the higher densities at those locations. Some of the other things, um, I, I guess just for a bit of context, over the last, um, seven years, the city added three thousand eight hundred and twenty-four multifamily units and we added one thousand thirty-seven single family units. So I know we heard from someone on council who was concerned about the amount of multifamily getting developed and there was that article that said Westminster was number twenty in the country or something like that. And so, um, I think, um, Mayor, what you're noting is, you know, we, we historically built a lot of single family. We've recently built a lot of multifamily, but we need to look at that spectrum in between, uh, which is what some people call missing middle housing. I know with some people, that term has kind of gotten a bad name to it, but I think it's still appropriate because it is, it's the stuff in the middle. It's the townhouses, the duplexes, the paired homes. So, um, in fairness, the, the prior comprehensive plan did allow a good bit of that and this builds on that, um, with those concepts.
And the reason I really question where decision, and it wasn't, and from this council, but we knew we have three different transit-oriented developments where if we do get rail, it will come through. But two of those are huge bus transit stations right now. So you look at the, the promenade where we have four large multifamily and not one single, not one affordable housing in there. I don't know what people were thinking about because transit stations are where we said in the past that that's where you put some of this stuff so people don't have to own a car. They are, can walk to the grocery store, they can walk to the amenities, they can go to a movie, they can go to dinner, whatever. And I look at those four large apartment buildings and not one has an affordable housing in it. So I would hope that with, and I don't, can't think of the term you used for the promenade, that they can build more. I hope to heaven you state to them, there has to be affordable housing in there. You can't build more there without affordable housing because it would be horrible in the transit situation that we have no affordable housing at that transit station, none. And I look at it every day. Everybody's got two or three cars going out onto Westminster Boulevard. So, um, that's just my comments on that, but.
That, that will be one of the benefits of the concept plan review and council can help applicants understand your expectations early on.
On page, let's see, on page one twenty-two. There's some, uh, one critical thing and Deborah Basket will laugh at me for even bringing this up, but I paid attention to the stars on the maps. Let me find one twenty-two.
Yeah, I don't have a one twenty-two.
Well, it was probably on my computer. Anyway, map seven-one.
Okay, okay, now I'm with you.
And figure, and, and I had on page one thirty-seven, um, eight, figure eight dash four. On page, on map seven-one, it doesn't have a yellow, um, star for the future transit station, but figure eight-four does. I want to make sure we have a star at the promenade or on the shops at Walnut Creek because it's behind this PetSmart and it's not there. I noticed when I was reading it from my computer, the, um, one that's missing, the yellow star, has two blue stars where thirty-six is for the transit. So I'm wondering if one of those stars was supposed to be yellow and goes up behind PetSmart, but it's not there and I noticed it and we need it in there.
Uh, okay, I, I'm with you now. I think what, the way we looked at that was that Church Ranch has a transit station and whether it's permanently at the off-ramp at thirty-six or whether it's over at the tracks in the future is something that could be figured out, but
We'll have both.
Uh, we could certainly make that edit. We could add the, um, future transit station star just off to the side.
Because you have it at the mall site, um, downtown. I want it at the west, it is, it belongs at Walnut Creek.
That's an easy edit to make.
Okay. Then, um, well, it was page seven oh-nine, seven twenty-two, so I'm not sure what map that was. I didn't write it down. But you show just the lower part of historic Westminster and you're showing, um, M one and you had England Park. I could not find the Bull's House designated and I, I could finally find England Park, which it should be just to the right, but it was in the gray of M one. I just wanted to be sure the Bull's House is designated as something and not industrial.
Bull's House would be right here on the south side of the rail tracks.
Yes, this isn't the map I was looking at. It was a different one that just had colors. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't write down, I just said page seven oh-nine on the computer and I don't have my computer up to look, but.
I think if you were that far back in the document, you were looking at the annexation area maps, which wouldn't have any impact on where the Bull's House is located, but it probably shows those areas because they're adjacent.
Yeah, well, I just didn't see it, so I just didn't want it disappearing into industrial.
No. Wait, wait, you know, we have an online version of the map where you can zoom in on a specific property. I believe that it's a public quasi-public designation there.
On, on the map I saw, it was all, this was all gray for M one and it had M one. So that isn't the right map either. So just know it, so if you come across it, it was just all grays and, um, like, it was a horrible map to read. I had, I could finally see through the green, England Park, so I knew where I was on the map because you couldn't read the street sign or the streets.
Yeah.
If I find it and I can email it.
Okay, yeah, we agree, the, the maps in the document are a little hard to read. That's why I made the online one a little bit easier to interpret.
And then, um, you did do a great job and is Sarah here tonight?
Sarah Borgers?
I just want to say to the, to the water team, um, you know, the last plan was a thousand acre feet over. And you all listened and you put the tool together, Sarah, that, um, anybody can walk in and, um, put their magic in there, whatever they're wanting to do. Um, and it says, if we're out of balance, in balance, whatever. That has been a great tool and have shared that with other cities. And, um, I, I also need to say to you at the Metro Mayor's Caucus, the presentation you made last week, they said it was fantastic. I met with Jeff Coe, uh, mayors, uh, Friday and some of them had listened in and able to go to it. And, um, he's afraid I'm going to lose my voice here. And, um, they just said thanks because you gave them great ideas. I know, um, Edgewater is, doesn't own their water and they're having to think about, um, water tap fees and everything. So you answered all their questions, so thanks for helping the region. Anyone have anything else?
I, I can just confirm, Mayor, the Bull's House is a public quasi-public land use, which is, um, appropriate given the public ownership of it.
That's all I was looking for. But like I said, whatever map I was looking at was all gray, M one, and I'm going, what?
I just had to compare the Google. I just had to compare the Google map on my phone with the document, it's like, yes, we're good.
You have something? Oh, sorry, Mayor Protem?
This is just more, to go on the record, is some of the conversation. So I had made the point about mix, and I think, to me, this has nailed it, because one of the things I want the public to think about, that I think about, is when we look at this, yeah, we need to focus on the people who can't afford the marketplace, and there's a place for that, but there is also a place for the marketplace, or there's a place for the assisted care living. And I think that we, we have to be mindful that we're looking at that full mix. I often hear people use police officers and firefighters as that, that, the hammer to go for affordable housing. But like, if you look at our police officer, lateral or first-year police officers, 77,000 up to 100 some odd thousand dollars, so unless they're a trainee, well, even actually as a trainee, they are making more than 80% AMI, which you have to go into. And, and I'm not saying that those numbers aren't important, but we also do want some affordable living for those folks that, you know, aren't, you know, actually designated affordable housing, that has public dollars behind it in order to, you know, make those adjustments. So I just want people to think about that when we look at this, it's not, you know, the mayor had a good point when you talked about the transit, we want some of that there. So it's a, it's a difficult dance, and I'm glad that we have a good plan, in order to figure out where that's all going to fit, and it's good to know that you guys already were planning that next phase, so...
Councilor Nermella?
So Mayor, you brought up different land uses on different properties, is this a time to suggest different ones?
If you want to.
So, I mean, there's many, but I will focus on a few. I, I think I laid out a bunch of them in my comments, like the wagon road, park-and-ride, I could see that having a mixed-use designation. Right now, it's just employment flex, the density of which is rather low in relation to the type of bus service that is located there. So to the mayor's point of leveraging, I mean, that's a huge amount of buses out of wagon road, I used to take that all the time. You know, that's a great opportunity to leverage for affordable housing, so if we could change that use. I know there were some comments for, requests for land use changes adjacent to Westminster Station, both on the west and on the east, because of the transit location that's there. I think that those requests are reasonable. One is the Northgate property, that's looking to have, I think, some combination of medium density and some commercial, moving from single-family, low-density, I think is its current proposed designation. That site has, in the past, been designated for T-Mund, up to 18 units to the acre, so I think just going up to medium-density, which is up to 12.
In that case, yeah. We actually have rolled in that into the staff recommendation.
So it's just that one. The other one, that, there are a couple of properties on the west side of the station area, that's, what are they, 7091 and 6921 Lowell, are great opportunities to revitalize that portion of Lowell, and improve access, opportunity to the station, really take advantage of its proximity to the station. They're not huge sites, I don't think they would move the needle significantly, but I think it could move the needle significantly aesthetically, and in just revitalizing that portion of the road, of that area.
And what do you want to move it to?
I think the request was mixed-use neighborhood, or something like that. So just a modest amount of density on that site, but it would, it would encourage redevelopment and improvement along that area. It's right across from our park, the little nature park that we have. It was in a couple of comments throughout the past few years of multiple, both the property owners and a lot of neighbors requesting it.
We, we, we no longer have a request from that group, as we did a couple of years ago. The only request we have from that group is now for the Northgate property, which we've included. I'm sure those gentlemen would be excited, if council wanted to see density going back to those Lowell sites, but we don't have a request from them now, so I don't know where they are with the property owners, if this is still something they're interested in.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think it's a good change.
Mayor, if I could bring a point of order, please? I think what we need to do is, is place the bill on the table, and then we could, then we could take each amendment, and if you would like to make those amendments, then, then we can vote on each one, or we're going, we're going to lose track, as I have already lost track. So, and then, and then we can, we can discuss that.
I was doing it just the opposite, I was looking for, once we have what people want to vote on, get them voted on, and then make a motion to include it in this.
That's fine.
Do you have any more? Did you have something?
I was going to offer to read it in, but if we're doing it that way, I'll wait.
Okay. Number one, let's go with, Councilor Baker, ask us to strike ADUs from... No, I'm doing these individually, and then when we get, know what we're doing, we put them into the amendment. Otherwise, we have lots of amendments. Strike ADUs from the comprehensive land use plan. Do I hear a motion? Is there a second? That dies with no second. I think this one's an easy one, number 10 and 11 in attachment 14, where revise two different things, one was bike lanes, one was drive-alone model. The staff has asked us to, we need to first look at the transportation and mobility plan, discuss that, and, and put it in there, and then it would go into the comprehensive land use plan. So those are both, I, I believe together, one says revised target for indicator, drive-alone model split to maintain rather than reduce, and the second one is revised target for indicator, in quotes, miles of bike lanes, buffered bike lanes, or shared bike lanes, from increase to increase without reducing vehicular level of service. And staff has just asked, the reason they say not to put it into the plan yet, is because we haven't had discussion about it. So do I have a motion on that one?
That'd be a motion to leave it out of the plan.
And discuss in transportation and mobility plan.
So taking staff's direction, yeah, I would, I would move to support that.
It's been moved and seconded to support on attachment 14, item 10 and 11, 9.8, both of them, to first have discussion of the transportation and mobility plan, to see where we land.
Can I add something to that? Number five, which is removing the reference to policy 3.3 for Vision Zero goals, which is, for those who don't know, Vision Zero is for, to basically get our deaths from all modes down to zero within the city, which is surprising that we would not want that as a goal, but I think it would be, instead of pulling it out, as the Planning Commission suggested, that could be something that could move in with 10 and 11 in our TMP.
The reason staff agreed with the Planning Commission recommendation there is, it references Vision Zero plans, goals, and initiatives, we don't, we don't have those yet, and so as they don't exist yet, we didn't think it was appropriate to reference them. If that's something the council wishes to pursue, that's something that could be part of that transportation mobility plan conversation when it comes back.
I'll just look straight at Deborah Basket, and say, I hope that comes back.
Okay. Mayor Protem? So we're including number five in that, and is staff okay with that?
Sure.
Did we get a second? It's been moved and seconded to include item 5, 10, and 11 from attachment 14 into the transportation mobility, mobility plan, to have discussion, and not put it into, at this point in time, into the comprehensive land use plan.
That works for staff.
Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Seymour, did you have something? Roll call, please. Councilor Baker? Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Councilor Emmons?
Yes.
Councilor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Councilor Nermella?
Yes.
And Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. Then we have item three, the support requested changes to Northgate property is described in attachment 15. Staff says support, but they're waiting outcome of our city council meeting.
Yeah, I guess I would say that staff, we're recommending it, but we didn't actually want to change the document until we were sure council wanted to make this change.
I'll move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to support the requested changes to the Northgate property as described in attachment 15. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please? Oh, sorry, Councilor Baker?
Yeah, the way I'm reading this, this could go up to 12 units an acre, dwelling units an acre, and isn't this going to get right back to what we had early talked about, two or three cars for each dwelling unit? Because it isn't, because it isn't walkable to the wagon road.
This, so the Northgate property is at Federal, on the east side of Federal, at about 70th Avenue, so it would be across from the Westminster Station?
Okay, I have the wrong property in mind.
So, and I guess I would say that staff was supportive of the residential medium-density as a compromise, because it would allow slightly higher density format, but it does not allow multifamily, so it gets that missing-middle product in a more compact format near transit.
Are we back to roll call? Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Councilor Emmons?
Yes.
Councilor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Councilor Nermella?
Yes.
And Council, Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
And Councilor Baker?
No.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote. Next one, on the amendment 14, is number two, the support requested changes to Han property is described in attachment 15, with an addition of 50-acre limit for continuing care retirement communities.
Can I ask a quick question, Mayor? I'm sorry. You had mentioned in your comments about potential, a different, that wasn't in here, here in the discussion, I thought you had said that you, that staff would be open to different designation, did I understand that right? I want to make sure I'm tracking the right thing.
By redesignating that Han property to urban multifamily, it would allow the Erickson proposal without the need to make further edits to this document, so that would be the cleanest and simplest.
And that's what we're proposing.
But to clarify, we suggested that if you were interested in advancing the Erickson project tonight through the comp plan update, the appropriate land use designation would be urban multifamily. Senior housing, such as the Erickson project, would be allowed by right, so if it's a choice of the council to, to entertain the possibility of Erickson moving forward on this property, the urban multifamily would be the appropriate land use category for that.
Mr. Frankel?
Thank you, Mayor. The other pathway that would be available to an applicant would be to submit an application, and apply for a PDP, ODP, and a comp plan amendment, once there's a specific application that's been submitted to the city and can be considered. So just to make council aware of options that are available in this scenario.
Yes, and what Mr. Frankel said is, the preferred option, from the staff's perspective...
Can I, can I ask what, the employment, what the hell is it called, employment, office, institutional campus, which allows for long-term nursing, care facilities, hospice, so this, why wouldn't that work for a continuum care?
So, so that was written where there's a hospital present, so essentially it would be only at those two locations in Westminster, where we have our hospitals at 84th Avenue, 144th Avenue. The text amendments proposed by the Erickson team would remove the nexus to a hospital, so any employment site could have those uses, and then the plan is written as an 18-unit per acre cap on those uses. Erickson's team is requested to go up to 24 units per acre, without the tie to a hospital, so it'd open up a lot more employment sites to those residential uses. That's why we believe a residential land use designation would be more appropriate, and would be consistent with what we've done for other CCRCs in the city.
I'm just having a hard time applying urban multifamily to the whole site. In addition, I'm looking at the other locations for that bright blue color on the map, and I see a little dot over near our transit station at Sheridan.
That's right.
I see, you know, the St. Anthony sites, both on the south, off of 84th Avenue, which I think it would be appropriate there, and then off of 144th, where I also think it would be appropriate. I mean, there's a little site with, is it the circle, what the heck is it called, circle?
Circle Point.
Circle Point.
Yeah.
I was thinking Circle K. The Circle Point site, which is essentially built out in the area where it's designated, so I'm struggling to see the huge impact that this would create. I feel like this would maintain, in general, the character of wanting to have some type of employment, institutional use at that site, while not giving away the farm with just urban multifamily on the entire, what is it, 66 acres or something?
I, I think I appreciate the concern, but, you know, the Erickson staff has been approaching city staff since August of last year, their plan is to develop that entire site with the CCRC use. The Douglas Ranch, the Douglas County location is 100 acres for the Windcrest facility, so that, the intention is to cover the entire site with that use.
Mr. Frankel?
If council would benefit from an executive session, that's an available option also.
Would anyone like an executive session?
I would.
Okay. Do we need a second for executive session?
The title I'd propose would be, an executive session to confer with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113 C8, and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024B.
I will poll council, if you want to go into executive session. Councilor Azadi? Councilor Nermella?
Yes.
Councilor, or Mayor Protem? Nancy McNally, yes. Councilor Emmons?
Yes.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned into executive session. Oh, okay.
Okay, we're back in session. It's 10:46. Before we proceed, is council okay if we forego the after-meeting meetings? So it's getting late and we still have our agenda to finish. Is everybody okay with letting people go home and we tackle that another day? Okay, thanks. Go home whoever's supposed to be sitting around at whatever hour and we'll talk another day. Thanks for being here. Okay, what would like, people like to discuss next?
Is now the time to bring up the other sites?
Oh, if you want to. Let's see, where were we? You have, why did I, I had your list. A second. You had wagon road moved to mixed use.
Yes, I would like to propose that. And there's one other, but I'll do each.
For clarification, the wagon road site would be mixed use activity center in your proposal?
Sure. But that goes up to what, 36?
Yeah, and that is what it was prior to the reboot we did with council last fall. So that was the prior destination before the change to employment flags.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to change wagon road to mixed use activity center. Any further discussion? Counselor Seymour?
Counselor, I'm sorry.
Roll call please.
Wait, I'm sorry. Where are you talking about?
It's up at Dairy Queen, think about it. The wagon road park and ride is, yeah, the RTD. It's at Huron and 120th Southeast corner.
Between Cracker Barrel and Dairy Queen.
Those are our landmarks.
Transit-oriented fast food.
Okay, and you want it as commercial?
Mixed use, activity center. To just maximize what we could do there.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Normella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
No.
Counselor Baker.
No.
Mayor Protem Demat.
No.
The motion passes on a 4-3 vote.
That brings us, we already discussed North Gate, so can we take that off?
Yeah. I had one more site that I wanted to throw in.
Besides the west side of station area on the Lowell?
Well, with staff kind of, I mean, yeah, I mean, if they come back in, I like it.
Again, that would be the benefit of the new concept plan review. Someone could come in and say, hey, that's, in that area, that's a pretty significant change from the pattern that's there. But council could weigh in and let them know, is this worth pursuing more seriously?
Okay, and the last one that I would like to propose be mixed use neighborhood is Brookhill, the northeast corner.
88th and Wadsworth, northeast corner.
Yeah.
And what do you want it?
Mixed use neighborhood, or mixed use, sorry.
Commercial mixed use?
Yes, commercial mixed use.
Remind me what that is.
So, commercial mixed use is, basically it's our commercial land use, but it allows the opportunity to add multifamily, up to 36 units per acre. And this is what's happened at the part of Brookhill north of 90th Avenue. So this would allow that, south of 90th Avenue down to 88th Avenue, the part with the Home Depot and Bed Bath Beyond. And I go to torchies.
It would be 24 units max to the acre if it's just a separate residential use standalone. And then it would go up to 36 if it were vertically integrated.
So you made a motion?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Baker?
Yes, I think this is a terrible idea. I think, I think the apartments that were put in the Brookhill neighborhood on the north part of it were a detriment to the community. We don't have anyone proposing this. We don't have anyone wanting this. This is just jamming more people into a tiny area. And our comp plan arounds allows roughly already with all the approved things, seven, six to seven thousand units. We don't need these extras.
Counselor Normella?
I would argue that we do. I think I've stated some of the numbers that just for affordable housing, we will need to provide in the community. And this is along transit, along Wadsworth. So I think this is a good area to locate higher density development. So, and it would help revitalize that corner which has consistently struggled over the years. I mean, aside from torchies, yay for torchies. But that's why I'm proposing it. I'd like to see more opportunities for achieving some, and there's not many, there's hardly any multifamily opportunities in the city. So I'm just trying to find a few more where I feel like I could get behind this plan a little bit more. So that's why I'm proposing it. I'm not trying to paper the, the city at the moment, but I think there's some reasonable sites.
See no one else? Oh, sorry.
I understand the want for it, but I have to say, that's real close to my house and I spend a lot of time in that shopping center. And I think what's left there is actually a lot of stuff that's been there for quite a long time between La Peep, Honeyback Ham, Chili's. And that's a pretty, at this point, pretty set center. So I'm going to be opposing this.
Roll call please. Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
No.
Counselor Normella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
No.
Counselor Baker.
No.
Mayor Protem Demat.
No.
Counselor Emmons.
No.
The motion fails on a 2-5 vote.
That brings us to, last thing I have on my list is number two, 3.2, support request changes to the Han property as described in attachment 15. A motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to support the changes to Han Hewitt property as described in attachment 15 with addition of a 50-acre limit for continuing care retirement communities. Any discussion? Counselor Emmons?
Thank you. I will be in support of staff recommendation of not moving forward with the change. I'd also like to propose to my colleagues because of that, to rescind my yes vote on the mixed use for the wagon road. And it's because it's in alignment with the decision that if we're going to make a change, that it needs to go through the process. So I'd like to change my no or my yes to a no. So that is the reason why I won't be, or excuse me, will be in support of staff's recommendation.
Anyone else?
I just need clarification on the motion. Is the motion in favor of the request or to support staff?
It's the amendment that Planning Commission sent to us.
Okay.
Was support requested changes, not support what the staff said.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Roll call please.
Wait, hold on, sorry. Clarify it one more time for me.
The Planning Commission supports requested changes to the Han property as described in attachment 15 with the addition of a 50-acre limit for continuing care retirement communities. The staff position is do not support recommended individual comp plan amendment paired with the rezoning and PDP to understanding the planned campus density and impacts to water, traffic, and other factors. So...
And the motion is supporting staff position?
No, supporting what the Planning Commission said.
Okay.
Because it was a 4-3 vote. Everybody clear? Roll call please.
Mayor McNally.
Uh, no.
Counselor Normella.
No.
Counselor Seymour.
No.
Counselor Baker.
No.
Mayor Protem Demat.
No.
Counselor Emmons.
No.
And Counselor Azadi.
No.
The motion fails.
Okay, I don't see anything else before us, so I need a motion to approve the comprehensive land use plan for 2040 with the adjustments that we voted on tonight.
Can I, I just clarify with the city attorney that the edit to the map that you identified, mayor, is that just a governor's error we could roll in?
Just as a friendly amendment for the star?
Yeah.
Moving the star, okay.
Sorry, just wanted to be sure we're clear on the wagon road parcel with Counselor Emmons' change of her vote.
The motion will fail on a 3-4 vote.
Okay. So what I have is, we struck So, what I have is, we struck ADUs. We, we concurred that ten, eleven, and five should go to Transit and Mobility Plan first and have discussion there about those three issues, and.
The, Councilor Baker's motion on the ADU did not pass?
No.
Okay, just make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, it's, I struck it. The... We said yes to the supporting the Northgate and no, we support what staff's recommendation was on the Han Hewitt plan. We didn't support the Planning Commission. I have my sheet if something. Okay, and with those changes and the comprehensive land use plan, do we have a motion, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to pass Council Bill number five on first reading to approve the revised 2040 comprehensive plan. This recommendation is based on a finding that the 2040 comprehensive plan meets the criteria established in Section eleven dash three dash two of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Councilor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Council's Bill number five on first reading. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Normella?
All right, so I will not be supporting this. You know, as a, as a planner, I know that staff is trying to work with the direction provided by City Council. It's not working with the direction provided by the community. As you look through the survey responses, you can see that the need for housing, the need for better access to transit, the need for more options for our community that will allow people to stay here. That's not, sure, it's in the policies, but it's not reflected in our land use plan. And I can't look at that land use plan and that disconnect between what the policies are proposing and what I'm looking at in the land use plan and feel like I'm, that's something that I can ethically do for, as a planner. So, the reason, you know, we're looking at, it says in our staff report, the 2040 plan responds to challenges facing the community. I would argue it does not. The plan policies do, but our land use map does not. It is not responsive to the city's changing needs or the projected needs of the community over time. We have proof even, you know, I think one of the things with housing, multifamily, is, yeah, we did locate it in areas where it was adjacent to neighborhoods. We didn't account for scale and context in carefully folding in multifamily, multifamily housing, and I think that was a detriment because people reacted poorly to it. You know, we're showing, for example, the multifamily housing that's in the downtown is utilizing forty percent less of the water that it was originally thought it would be using, so. And as we age as a community, our household size is going to decrease. So, we'll actually probably lose population or at least stay the same over time, over the next twenty years. So, I'm not really concerned about our water consumption, particularly as our staff has given us a strong understanding of our conservation efforts and what those can do for us. You know, in the staff report, it also mentioned that our goal here with the plan, it curtailed higher-density residential formats and mixed-use development, which again goes counter to addressing our severe housing shortage and affordability. What we're instead creating is exclusivity. And, you know, you look at, can anyone afford to live in Boulder in this room? Boulder's highly exclusive. It has a growth boundary, and it also has height maximums, and it's very difficult to develop there, and there's also a lack of land. So, as we become more exclusive, we're also going to push people out. Those people who'd love to stay here won't be able to stay here. Their property taxes will increase if we're not, if we're not helping to address that issue, if we're not helping to address HOA costs and increases and helping people to stay in their houses. You know, and these things aren't listed in the comp plan in trying to keep people in their houses, even though it's an issue that's, that was even highlighted in our existing conditions report. You know, for the adopted, the recently adopted 2023 Equity and Zoning for the American Planning Association, this plan is not consistent. So, again, our planners are proposing something, and again, I'm not, you know, I know they're trying to be receptive to the direction from, given by council, the majority of council, but this is not something that is even supportive, supported by the American Planning Association in terms of our lack of addressing density and allowing, we're actually reducing density. I'm just going through my notes here. What I would point out is that with respect to the criteria that we're supposed to be basing this on, we're not locating density where we have transit, so we're actually pulling it away. And so, this is, to me, not consistent with our vision of allowing for our community members to thrive or to maintain a resilient economy, because last time, last year, at the Chamber event where we had, you know, a ton of businesses in Westminster, they were asking about affordable housing and our housing crisis. And that's an issue because as people, as companies look to locate here, there's no housing. I mean, if Erickson locates here, where will, where will their nurses live? You know, so we don't have, we're not creating capacity, and we're not creating capacity for people to stay here either. I know you mentioned the police officers. I'm glad that they're making more money, but our teachers are still not. Our nurses are still not. Those people who are providing services at our restaurants are not. So, there's that piece that I don't think meets our criteria. The other criteria is the stakeholders, number four, where we have reached out to other, other organizations and jurisdictions. Again, we're not putting density where we could take advantage of our transit. We're looking at, let's see, sorry. For example, eighty percent of the people that participated in the Latino Festival, for example, said that they would be located, that their ideal home style, if they were to plan for their future, is a non-single-family type of unit. So, our responsiveness to the community, particularly the input that we pulled in through 2018 and 2019, this goes against the input that we received. And so, that goes back to number one of the process, public has not been accessed in two years, particularly with the latest significant changes. So, I'll just leave it at that. So, again, I think this falls short, and I will say no.
Councilor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I want to very much thank staff for sticking with, with us through this process, and we greatly appreciate that. And, and the final product, like most works, is never perfect, nor do we wish it to be perfect. We have an opportunity in this city as we move forward to make changes, as there are opportunities to do that, and for people to apply to make changes as well. And so, those changes seem to come to us all the time. So, we will see where the future brings us. If we were perfect into 2040, we wouldn't need a council either, so. Some people might be happy with that, you know, might be all right, but thank you again to, to staff and for all the work that they've put into this.
Councilor Baker?
I will be voting yes on this. It's not perfect, but that's okay. For my listening to the public, this is exactly what the public asked for. I also think it's ethical because we haven't over-promised water. The plan before made, made really promises of water that we couldn't keep, and we've reduced that. And my feedback from, okay, the public says we already have too many multifamily housing, and government cannot make affordable housing. The market makes affordable housing. The market sets the price for the houses we live in. If we want to put boundaries around the market, we can do that, but we can't plan for affordable housing. We actually had, as a city, we had the, well, Westminster Housing Authority, didn't we? And we owned a bunch of apartments, and we gave them away to like the Salvation Army or something, didn't we? Because it was just too much of a chore. You know, government shouldn't provide housing. Government is lousy at providing housing. Government great is at facilitating housing, but we only have five percent of our land left. And we need to make promises to the owners of those land that we can keep. And that's what this plan does, and that's why I'll be voting for it.
Anyone else? Councilor Normella?
I'll just say, I'm, I'm glad that we had outreach that went beyond Councilor Baker's few conversations with the people that think alike with him. We have a lot of community members who are not entitled and who are suffering and who do need affordable housing. I am very glad Councilor Baker lived in a time where he didn't have student loans. He didn't have to deal with daycare, huge daycare prices. He didn't have to deal with really high housing prices, so I applaud you for living your life in such a place of grace where you feel like no one else has an issue. I, I just, I'm, the rest of the community, the rest of the planet, we are all suffering from years and years of student loans and no ability to afford housing. And, yeah, I'm in a good place for myself after twenty-plus years of working and some help along the way. And I think a lot of people are in a lot worse of a place, and affordable housing is one way where we can help people get housed and access opportunity once more. I just think it's very short-sighted of a comment to, to say that the market would provide the affordable housing, so.
Councilor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first start with thanking staff. I think, I know a lot of work went into that, and you've had a lot of direction from us, so you deserve a thank you, first of all. It's not easy revising something that we already put a whole lot of work into, so thanks for that. I'm gonna be voting no on this. For all the reasons Councilor Normella has already said, so I won't repeat them. I think they were excellent and relevant and aligned with the incredible number of residents that have reached out to me over the last two years since I've been on, or one year and a half now, since I've been on council. I won't repeat the points I've made already. Well, I guess I will now. Housing is a problem. This plan reverses a good plan, which I thought the 2040 comprehensive plan was good. Yes, it had some errors that we actually, there's, so there are a lot of great things in this revised plan. I'll start there. That actually should have been made, that I thank council for actually shifting staff's perspective on. But there are more bad things in this plan than good, and the main thing is it doesn't offer enough housing opportunities, enough middle, missing middle, enough affordable, all of it. It's prioritizing commercial over housing in a crisis that I don't even know how else to phrase it, right? We've said it a million different ways. I don't want to use the word irresponsible, but it's very close to irresponsible to not prioritize housing in this time that we're in. And just to explain my no vote on the Han property, I'm, I'm all for medically-centered senior housing, but my no vote was because I think you should go through the standard process, bring it back to us through the standard process, and that's why I voted no, not because I didn't want that. I think we need housing of all kinds, mainly for our seniors. Councilor Normella has already laid that out for everyone. Dr. Cog has laid it out for everyone, the state, the feds, whoever you want to look at, look at any report, and you'll see things are only getting worse, and our resistance to apartments and multifamily, and, you know, I hear that a lot, and it's also irresponsible and entitled, to be honest with you. And I don't like using those words, but someone had to say it. So, thank you, staff, but I will be voting no on this.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thanks to staff. Again, I mean, I've been through this process with you a while. We've certainly been in some contentious votes where this died on the table with us only having six council members that couldn't come to agreement on it, so. I also would like to, the public to understand where I come from. I've lived in this city most of my life. I had to move out of the city when I first moved out of my folks' home because I couldn't afford it, much like my oldest child is living in Greeley because that's what she can afford. That's often what folks do when they move out of their first home. I certainly didn't grow up privileged. I am the son of a police officer who worked thirty-three years as a public servant, a mom who stayed home, I'm a high school dropout who got a GED, went to college, and now I teach college part-time. So, I've certainly earned my, my place in this city and to be able to afford the home that I live in. And it by no means comes from any kind of entitlement, besides I was born to a family who taught me what work ethic meant and what work ethic got you, and I think that's what this country is about. I would say that it is irresponsible to not have a good housing plan that has good mix. I think that this council has shown that we understand the need for housing, whether it be affordable housing, whether it be the middle, missing middle, missing middle, because the majority of us approved the most substantial housing increase in this city's last couple decades. So, to hear that it was irresponsible from somebody who voted against that, I, I'm, you know, the housing crisis, I guess, only counts when there aren't people who are gonna get mad at a vote from this chamber. So, I will say that I think that this brings forward a good mix of what we need, because that's what the city needs. They need a good mix that they can sustain, and without water, you're not gonna sustain anyone. You could put as many rooftops as possible, but if you can't get water out of the tap, those people can't survive. So, I appreciate the work that both the utility has done on this, that planning has done on this, the many, many, many hours that council has spent on this, which pale in comparison to, I'm sure, the amount of hours that staff has put into it. But I'm proudly gonna be supporting this, and I think it's gonna be a good path forward. I will say I also, for folks who need to put in an application for a property, this council is also working on making that easier, where you could get the fingerprints of council early on in the process, so you don't have to get too far down the road. I think that's gonna be a substantial benefit both to the community, be it the folks who live here and the development community. So, I look forward to the things that come forward in the future for us.
Councilor Emmons?
Thank you. I will be in support of this. Thank you to staff for taking time, extra years, and revising what we asked for. I will say, I was the first to ring the bell on the outreach piece as Andrew, maybe for calls. And I had made a point that it came to us, this first came to us in, I want to say that, middle of 2020, maybe early 2021. And it was concerning. And it was concerning that a lot of the legwork of the plan was done in 2018 and 2019, but since we've paused and we have taken greater depth into the Comprehensive Plan, I've seen staff do individual outreach and make changes where necessary of the direction of council. I've seen it in the newsletter for the Westie. It's been posted on the website. It has also been through the Planning Commission again. So, there is extensive outreach that has happened in the last few years that we've been revising this. So, I am comfortable moving forward with that aspect of it. I will say that, you know, not every plan is perfect, as mentioned, but it does create, and we talk about balance. And you have some check marks and then you don't, and then you need to find out how you're going to make the check marks work. And so, while this doesn't have everything, it speaks to a direction that we are going as a city. I grew up in this city as well, and to, you know, my counterparts say that, you know, we need to have grace and be kind, but I don't know everybody's background, and I'm not going to say and point out that how it must be nice that you've got to a certain point of your life. We all have our own struggles and backgrounds. For me, I had to live with my best friend's parents. I came out at the height of the recession in college, and I couldn't find a job to save my life. And so, I had to stay with my best friend's parents. My parents lived in Oregon at the time, so it was either moving to Oregon or staying in Westminster, and I wanted to stay in Westminster. So, I scrimped and saved for years to be able to save for my first home. It was a condo on 119th and Federal. It was a 1970s build and when we could build condos. We've had state legislation that says we can't build condos. Obviously, we're having conversations about changing that. So, I think that we need to have all kinds, looking at the, all kinds of housing, looking, and I use my, my, my decision based on also information that we've received on March 7 of last year, which was directly from the state where the demographer came and gave a presentation on where we're going as a state, how we have declining population, how there's less mobility, how there's less migration to Colorado, how, yes, our population is increasing in age, but much like what we're seeing with our schools, we're not having the population to fill them. And so, again, it goes back to balance. We don't want to be overretailed, we don't want to be overpopulated in housing. Yes, there is a scream for, for housing, we get that. We're adding, I think, in the conversation in Counselor Baker's questions, we've just seen thousands of home, home units being added within the next couple of years. So, all that together, not great, not 100%, but it's at least 90% for me, and that's why I'm supporting it.
Anyone else? For me, thank you to staff. I can't imagine, you've been through two councils, three, three votes, and flat-out no votes, and we've gotten a good product, we work towards what we have as water. To me, you know, that was the one thing I screamed about, was we have only X amount of water. Now, that's what we build to. We don't build and then figure out the water. That would be unconscionable. So, with this plan, because I just believe we're going to have good conversations, we are going to look, as I mentioned, the four, four huge apartment complexes that sit at a transit station and was done in the last eight years, and not one of them has an affordable home in it. Who was asking those questions? Why wasn't somebody asking those questions? Why wasn't somebody saying you have to have even 10%, 5%? So, we had some around that station. We have zero. And then, we have this thing where somebody can build at least one or two more apartment buildings at that transit site in the midst of commercial, taking up parking spaces, which in that area is prime. When you have a hockey tournament like last weekend, there was no parking anywhere because they had to go across the street in order to come back to the ice rink because it was a big event, and that's what we see whenever the ice rink is full and back at the house. So, I don't understand building on those kinds of sites because for families that might want to live there and whatnot, it just doesn't seem conducive to me that that's good. The other thing we're missing is in all of those places that we build that, these people, these apartments like dogs, but the dogs and the owners forget to pick up the poop. And so, you have messes, and we don't have any dog parks in those areas for, I don't know how many dogs, I've met so many, it's, and I love them, but owners aren't responsible for them. So, we have to think through where things naturally go, we have to ask the questions each time, and it's up to us to bring it up. How many affordable units are we going to have if we're going to do multi-housing? They don't all have to go up, they can be different looks, and I believe we don't have different looks in this city. And I want people to be able to own a home, not throw their money at rent, and help them with, with that. Metro Mayor's Caucus has worked for years having help with down payments with housing, and we've had many residents be able to use that here in Westminster. So, with all of this, it's about communication, it's about looking at each, and I bet you we look, we've got, what, 85 properties left? We will talk some things through, you will listen, we will, you'll tell us what will work, what won't work. And for the Hahn property, this was about setting what can go on things, but it doesn't exclude people coming to us and saying, "We want you to look at it for a change." That's what the Comprehensive Land Use Plan is about, and that's the way we will work from this point forward, and I'm grateful to have a 2040 plan finally, and I can't imagine how you feel. So, roll call, please.
Counselor Nermella.
No.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
No.
And Mayor McNally.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-2 vote.
That brings us to Resolution 8. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 8, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Westminster and the Colorado Department of Transportation pertaining to the receipt of $779,000 of federal funds for the Federal Boulevard Bus Stops Project.
Counselor Seymour.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution Number 8. Is there any further discussion?
Counselor Emmons. I just want to say I was previously a no vote on this, but because it moved forward with the majority, I will be a yes tonight.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Yeah, Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
And Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to move to adopt Resolution Number 9. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 9, authorizing the city manager to accept Denver Regional Council of Governments' Transportation Improvement Plan funds for the Federal Boulevard Bus Stop Project.
Counselor Seymour.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 9. Roll call, please. Oh, is there any discussion? Sorry. Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us, for a motion to pass, Counselors Bill Number 6. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 6 on first reading to appropriate grant funds to be received from the Denver Regional Council of Governments and administered by the Colorado Department of Transportation for the Federal Boulevard Bus Stop Project.
Counselor Seymour.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number 6. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Seymour.
Oh, sorry.
Roll call.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Baker.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Item C1. Counselor Seymour.
Move to authorize city manager to enter in agreement with HARM, Rodriguez, Ostrander, and Prescott PC, formerly known as HARM, Rodriguez, Ostrander, and Dingus PC, to provide legal services on an as-needed basis to acquire interest in land for capital improvement projects of the city that may require the use of eminent domain in an amount not to exceed $250,000, in addition to the previously approved $550,000 for a total amount not to exceed $800,000.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt, to authorize Item C1. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baker.
This is for the Westminster Boulevard property.
Dave Frangell, City Attorney, yes, Counselor, it is, and it is to pursue the appeal.
Okay. And have we used up the, well, initial $550,000?
Yes, through the trial and the payment of our expert witnesses.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
It is 11:30, and this meeting is adjourned.